Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. It's 5:36. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Here.
Councilmember Pulapati is absent at this time, but we expect her to join us later this evening. Councilmember Sander.
Here.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Here.
Mayor Terry.
Here. I'll move on to item two, and I'll ask the city clerk to read the TV announcement, please.
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will air on Thursday, April 21st at 9:00 a.m. and Friday, April 22nd at 1:00 p.m. The meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14. A DVD copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department, and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you. Normally, I would call on a member of the audience, but that screenshot that I'm looking at is really small, so I'm going to ask our city manager if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Then I'd ask the audience to remain standing for the invocation, and tonight we will be joined by Elizabeth Brick of the United Methodist Church to give the invocation.
Thank you. Please join me in prayer.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, Elizabeth. You're in the room. Go ahead, and unmute.
Thank you so much. Please join me in a spirit of prayer. God of many faiths and traditions, tonight we recognize the holiness of this season for Christians, Jews, and Muslims alike, and we give thanks for our common call to serve our community. Thank you for all of the good work that we are entrusted with every day, and we thank you especially for that which we will consider in this evening's council meeting. I pray that you will bless those who are gathered here tonight with wisdom, candor, compassion, and kindness as they pursue tonight's agenda. Together may we seek always the best and highest good for all of your people. Gracious God, we are thankful for your presence and your power in this world, and so we lift this prayer with gratitude and with joy. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So with that, we'll move on to presentations. And first up, we have a presentation recognizing the need for lifesaving organ transplants in California and encouraging people to register to become organ and tissue donors and give the gift of life. And tonight, we have Kyla Aquino Irving, External Affairs Director of Sierra Donor Services, to receive a proclamation from Councilmember Gatewood.
All right. The city of Rancho Cordova recognizes the need for lifesaving organ transplants in California and encourages people to register to be organ donors and tissue donors and give the gift of life. One organ donor hero can save the lives of eight people through the donation of organs and improve the lives of up to 75 people with the eyes and tissue donation. And more than 107,000 patients wait, continue to wait for lifesaving organ transplants on a national waitlist, including 1,500 in the service area. Every day, 20 people die on the waiting list because of the shortage of organ donors, and every year, 1 million people need a coronary and tissue implants. And the Series Donor Services serve as Northern California and Northern Nevada communities and is the center dynamic interconnected system supporting the donor families, local hospitals, and transplant centers for the vital mission of saving and improving lives through organ, eye, and tissue donation. In 2021, Sierra Donor Services, for the second year in a row, through the pandemic facilitated over 407 organs, organ transplants, saving more than lives ever, thanks to the selfless generosity of 164 organ donors and 957 donors. We honor all of those who were given extraordinary gifts of life and being able to extend their lives. California can register to be the donor regardless of the age and medical history. We encourage every Californian to register organs and tissues on their driver license ID and motor vehicle online, donatelifecalifornia.org. Therefore, be it resolved, the city of Rancho Cordova here to proclaim that the month of April 2022, the Donate Life Month. And then that gentleman right there in the red shirt signed his name and affixed his name to this. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Of course. This is when you talk.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Kyla Aquino Irving. I'm not just the External Affairs Director of Sierra Donor Services. I'm also a two-time kidney transplant recipient and proud resident of Anatolia. So I do live here in Rancho Cordova, and it means so much to me that my local government supports organ donation since there are almost 1,500 people just in the Sacramento region waiting for organs. And this is a solvable problem, and I'm so glad that I have the support of my local government in getting this problem solved. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyla.
Thank you.
Kyla, I was just going to say thank you for coming tonight, and I wanted to share with you that I was really hoping to get to present that to you. My mother is a three-time kidney transplant recipient.
Wow.
My brother has a kidney transplant, and so does my aunt.
My gosh.
So kidney disease early. So I've seen firsthand what, how it can affect somebody's life. And my mom's last kidney donation was actually through an exchange with an altruistic donor who donated some, just donated to somebody that they didn't even know, and that's how my mother got a kidney.
That's amazing.
So what you all do every day is very, very important and can change people's lives. My mother probably lived another 20 years because of it, if not more. So thanks for all you're doing.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm lucky that my mom gave me a kidney 20 years ago, and that allowed me to be a mom to that little guy in the back of the room there.
What little guy? Oh, there he is. Aww.
So thank you.
Well, thank you for coming.
No problem. I hope we'll be in touch. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Item 5.2, Annual Mosquito and West Nile Virus Update by the Sacramento Yellow Mosquito and Vector Control District. Oh, wait, I'm supposed to call a name here, too. Is Gary Goodman in the room, or are we expecting him on Zoom?
Gary's joining us via Zoom.
So I don't see him in Zoom. Are you moving him, or?
I did move him. He's, he's... He's there.
Can, can you hear me?
Oh, there we go. Now I can see it. Mine was just slowing down here. Go ahead, Gary.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And I'll share the screen, Stacy. Is that the best way to do it?
Yes.
Okay. Give me just one second there, then. I'll switch on. So my name's Gary Goodman, and I'm here to present the annual mosquito and vector control kind of update for the season as we start to get into a bit of the warmer temperatures. Hopefully, you can see the screen now.
Uh, now we can.
Okay. I do want to acknowledge, I believe Robert McGarvey is in the audience, and he is the Rancho Cordova Appointed Board Member. I'm sorry I couldn't make it there in person, but I always appreciate the council's willingness to listen to mosquitoes at the beginning of the season so that we can try to help protect folks. So... There we go. So the district, we are covered, cover all of Sacramento and Yolo County, so two different districts, about 2,000 square miles. And essentially, our main goal is to try to provide safe, effective, economical mosquito and vector control to the residents of both Sacramento and Yolo County. Our authority is under the California Healthy Safety Code. And not only do we do mosquito control, but under the vector control, we also do tick surveillance and surveillance for Lyme disease, which we do have in our area specifically around the American River Corridor, which hits Rancho Cordova and then up in some of the foothills. So our goal is to try to control mosquitoes and ticks, or at least awareness of ticks and Lyme disease in our area so that people can take the appropriate measures to try to protect themselves. So our technicians go out on a daily basis and look for sources just like this, whether it be a backyard green swimming pool, or rice field, or irrigation ditch, buckets that are in people's backyards, anything that really can hold water for more than 72 hours has the potential to breed mosquitoes. And so we really need the public's help in, one, being able to identify where they're being, where they're being bothered by mosquitoes, and then, two, if they are, give us a call and make sure that we know, because typically, we come out within 24 hours to the location to try to assess the value. But then we also need the public's help in being able to try to identify things that are in their own backyard, such as buckets, or old tires, or dog dishes, and making sure that they're just dumping those things out so that they're not having an impact by breeding mosquitoes on their property that have an impact on the entire neighborhood as mosquitoes do fly. So we approach our vector control program by what we call an integrated mosquito management approach. The first is public information. We have a very active social media program, but just advertising, you'll hear our ads on, on the radio, you'll see billboards for us, you'll see us on TV, those types of things, whatever we can do to try to help educate the public. We also go out to various fairs, although in the last two years with COVID, it's been difficult to go out to events, but we're starting to schedule those again this year. But we also give presentations at neighborhood events and those types of aspects to make sure that people are aware of what the challenges are and what they can do to try to help prevent it. Then we do what we call surveillance. We set traps out throughout the entire district, and we collect those mosquitoes and then bring them back to our laboratory. And in our district, we have about 22 different species of mosquitoes, and we separate them out by their species and by their sex, specifically because really only the female mosquitoes bite. Male mosquitoes just feed on nectar. The female mosquitoes bite to get the protein from your blood so that they can produce the eggs. But this way, we, we know kind of what the population is happening throughout the district, and then, of course, we're testing that to see if there's any prevalence of disease. The third method that we use, biological control, that's the fish right there in the middle of the screen. At our facility, we have 22 ponds that are dedicated towards breeding mosquito fish. We're probably the largest mosquito fish breeding facility in the country. We plant about 3,500 pounds of fish just in Sacramento and Yolo County in places like backyard swimming pools that are green, or rice fields, or irrigation ditches, those types of things. Then we have an ecological management department, and this one is specifically where we have heavy equipment. So at the district, we have both a dump truck and a backhoe, and we actually work with landowners such as US Fish and Wildlife Service, Nature Conservancy, those types of landowners and/or farmers to be able to try to make sure that they're not producing mosquitoes on their own property by facilitating water movement. So when that water starts to stagnate through an irrigation ditch, we want to try to clear that out so that there's not mosquitoes that are breeding there. In that ecological management department, we also have a very active drone program where we're using drones to be able to try to take pictures, some of them with some, some interesting filters that allow us to see where water is through the vegetation. So it's a very expanding program and one that we're very proud of. And then the last component is what we call chemical control, and that's essentially when we, when we find those mosquitoes breeding in the water, we treat that with a specific product that kills those mosquitoes. And so our goal is to try to get them in their aquatic stage before they emerge as adults, because once they emerge as adults, then they can take a blood meal, and then they can have the potential to transmit disease. And so we want to try to get them in their larval stage, and that chemical control program is both larva siding and adult siding, which is backpacks, trucks, and/or even the airplane that we've done in years past. So just a quick snapshot of West Nile virus activity in California over the past few years. Last year was actually pretty, pretty mild. We don't know if that was due to some level of the pandemic and maybe people not going out as frequently, but you did have less cases of, of West Nile virus that were reported. Although I do want to try to make one notation here is that typically, these cases that get reported are the more serious neuroinvasive form of the disease, which can lead to hospitalization and paralysis and blindness, and obviously even death. And so CDC estimates that for every neuroinvasive case that's reported, there are anywhere from 30 to 70 cases that are not reported, because typically, they are flu-like symptoms. And so a lot of times, people get the flu, or not feel well, and they stay home, and they recover, and everything's fine. But we do recognize that this disease is actually significantly underreported, and we want to make sure that people are aware of that, that there's a real risk, and there's some things that they can do to try to help prevent them. Here's an outline of Rancho Cordova, and specifically, the activity that we saw last year. Not a lot within city boundaries. The, the red circles are positive mosquito samples that we collected last year for West Nile virus, really only four within the city boundaries. But you can see just on the other side of the river quite a bit more activity. And then the, the yellow triangles are the positive dead birds. So we do collect dead birds. If you see one, you can give the district a call. We'll pick it up, and then we test that bird to see if it died of West Nile virus. We do have a new concern, specifically, we call invasive mosquitoes. So as I mentioned, we have about 22 different species of mosquitoes within our district boundaries now. However, there are some that are starting to move into our area that we're not, we're not endemic to this. So the 80s egypti, or yellow fever mosquito, endemic to Southeast Asia and South America, much more tropical areas. But it's starting to make its way and become established more in California. In Southern California, they've had this mosquito for the last 10 or 15 years, and just within, since 2019 is when we found it within Sacramento County. And so the challenge with this particular mosquito, one, they really like to bite people. Two, they're very difficult to find because they lay their eggs in, in cryptic sources, like flower pots or even bottle caps. We found some actually in a potato chip bag that had water in them. So they're difficult to be able to try to find, and the challenge with this is that these can transmit some of the more exotic diseases such as Zika, Dengue, or chikungunya. And these are diseases that have come to the US in the past few years. And so if you are being bothered by mosquitoes, we want to know about it. So just give us a call or go to our website. And again, typically, we come out within 24 hours to be able to try to, to, to give you a service request. We have detected invasive mosquitoes. Here's a general map of the areas that we've got. So as you can see, they're a bit scattered, and we have a large population out in winters. Davis, we found them. The Arden Arcade area, which is not that far from Rancho Cordova. The Rosemont area is another one where we found these particular mosquitoes, and then up in Citrus Heights and Oak Grove. So while they're not prevalent throughout the district, they are very pesky again, and they like to bite people, and they like to be inside homes. And so if you're being bothered by these, please let us know so that we can come out and do a service request for you. Again, here's some of the general sources of where these things are. These are difficult for us to find because, for the most part, these are going to be in your backyard. And it's difficult for us to be able to try to go to everyone's backyard and look for all of these sources. So we really ask the public's help in being able to try to identify if they have any standing water in their backyard, and if they can, to just dump that out. And that's a big step in the right direction towards minimizing mosquito breeding. Again, outreach by the district on this particular invasive mosquito. We do a lot of service requests, and so when we go to residents, we'll go around the yard. We'll look at a number of different things, containers that might breed these types of mosquitoes. We may set a trap in an area, but just really it's a matter of education so that people are aware of what the challenges are, and what are some of the things that they can do to try to help protect themselves. We are looking at what we call innovative control methods. And specifically, I want to reference sterile insect technique, SIT. It's been ongoing for about 50 years with various individual invasive pests, but it's now just starting to expand into mosquitoes specifically. And so there are a couple of different companies that are working on sterile insect technique. And essentially, what that means is you sterilize the males through some method, and then you release those males into the wild population. So that's a difference for a mosquito-controlled district. Because we're looking to essentially kill or control mosquitoes, not release them out into the public. But essentially, when you release these sterile males, they mate with the females, the wild females, and then the progeny is no good. And so it's been a very effective technique in places like Brazil, South America, and some of the Caribbean islands, and they've been doing a trial in the Florida Keys. And actually, this year, Visalia, just south of us in California, got approval for a trial as well. So this would probably be a method that we implement in the next couple of years, but just wanted to give the, the council a heads up on that. And always exploring, trying to more outreach opportunities. One thing I think that is very popular for us is we do hand out mosquito repellent in the packets. So if you have, as we start to get out of COVID a little bit, and you have those outdoor events specifically in the evening time where people are going to be exposed to mosquitoes, please give us a call. Let us know. We will be more than happy to drop off mosquito repellent for those residents to use while they're out enjoying those activities. And so unless the council has any question, that's all I have. You can get more information by giving us a call, 1-800-429-1022, or you can visit our website at fightthebite.net.
Thanks, Gary. First, can I ask the city clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
I see a hand that's raised in Zoom. That's Bob.
Hey, Bob, do you have a comment?
I'm unmuted. I'm not sure if it's working or not.
Yeah, we can hear you now, Bob. Go ahead.
Okay. Hello. I'm just glad that Gary was able to bring it to the city council. As you can see on that map, there were not as many active mosquitoes on the tests we saw in Rancho Cordova. They're kind of almost around us. So we're fortunate. Why, I don't know, but it's something you still have to pay attention to, especially with the rain we've been getting, and we're going to get more rain tonight, tomorrow, and rest of this week. So be sure you empty whatever you've got there that is letting water just stand because it's something that we've been paying attention to for a long time. And I learned a lot from the mosquito vector control board, and try to pass on something that, I can't do it as well as Gary can, but I pass on what I've got to you. So thanks, Gary.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions for the presenter?
Yes, I raised my hand.
What?
So this may be an urban legend, but supposedly only lady mosquitoes hum and only lady mosquitoes bite.
It is true that only female mosquitoes bite. Male mosquitoes really don't do much of anything, insert your own joke here, but they are there for mating and to feed. So when mosquitoes emerge from a particular source, the male mosquito will look for nectar to try to sustain themselves, and then they'll look to mate with females. The females are the only ones that bite. Both male mosquitoes buzz, so that one is not true because essentially, you're hearing the wing fluttering. But male mosquitoes really are not going to bother you because you're, you're not, you're not a flower to them. So they're, they're feeding on nectar and things. Yeah, so well. So yeah, typically, you're going to hear that female mosquito, and that's the wing fluttering that's coming, and they are the only ones that bite. They, they're looking for the protein in your blood so that they can produce the eggs that they'll then lay in the next source.
Okay, so I probably ask this every year. How much at risk are our domestic pets?
Yeah, from West Nile virus, really not, not really that much at all. It, it is interesting in terms of horses for West Nile virus, big impact. About 50%, especially there is a vaccine for horses. So if you have a horse, please get it vaccinated because that will definitely help. But horses, if they get West Nile virus, it's about a 50% survival rate, and it is a painful one if horses get stricken with it. In terms of domestic cats and dogs, those types of things, really no impact whatsoever. The studies have not shown, while they may carry it, it just doesn't have an impact on their system. But for horses, absolutely.
Okay, that's, yeah, for horses.
Yeah.
Okay, and so for all of us who live here along the river, we all remember probably 10 years ago when West Nile showed up, and it took out all of the crows, magpies, and jaybirds. They're all in that one family. And are they at risk again this year?
Yeah, absolutely. West Nile virus is actually a bird disease. So it's carried by birds. It's vectored by mosquitoes. So mosquito bites an infected bird and then passes it on either to another bird in the next blood meal or to a human. And the crows and corvids, and specifically, the yellow-billed magpie that we have here in the Sacramento area, definitely very much a part of that cycle. And so we, our district actually helped fund a study from, out of UC Davis, Dr. Smallwood, I believe, where he did a survey of yellow-billed magpies up and down the valley, because this is the only place that we have them, and saw over a 50% reduction in, in, in that population from West Nile virus when it first came to us in 2005. They've started to rebound a little bit, but of course, they're the right type of bird that are stricken with this particular virus, and, and yeah, they, they tend not to make it. So the crows and corvids definitely are the reservoirs for this particular virus.
Yeah. So my neighborhood is probably overrun with crows, and we have a very few jaybirds. And I don't think any of us have seen the number of magpies that we had before, like 10 years ago. They were... I always, I tell my kids, it's no wonder that there was a cartoon called Heckle and Jekyll because Mel Blanc just had it nailed. He knew exactly what these birds were. They were so funny. So we'll all look forward to a time when we don't have to deal with that anymore. But so, so people should report when they see a dead bird, especially one of those three.
Yep, absolutely. If you see a dead bird, give the district a call, and you can, you can actually report it. It's, it's a program actually run by California Department of Public Health. If you go to westnile.ca.gov, but you can give us a call at the district, and we'll help you walk you through the process so that we can come pick it up and then test it to see if it's carrying virus.
Super. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for the presenter? None. Thank you, Gary, for joining us today.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, before we move on to public comments, just a couple of housekeeping items on the agenda that I want to make sure that the public is aware of. Item 10.1, Resolution Approving Sunrise Lot J, has been, the applicant has requested to continue that item. Without, if there isn't any objection, we'll, we'll do that when we get to it. But I know we have some public comments turned in to the city clerk on that item, and I just want to let the members of the public know that we're not going to have a presentation tonight. You can stay and still make your public comment, or you can choose to leave if that was what you were waiting for. So just want to give everybody a heads up, whether you're at City Hall or you're on, on Zoom, that we will not be discussing 10.1. But if you do want to stay and make a public comment, you can do that. But there won't be a presentation or discussion on that item tonight. Any issues with that, colleagues?
No. Do you want to motion to continue it to a certain date?
We will when we get there. I just want to warn people because we have a handful of other things to get to in between there, and I'd hate for somebody to sit here for 30 or 45 more minutes before we get there and then realize we weren't going to cover that tonight. So... So when we get there, we'll, I'll take that motion. With that, we'll move on to public comment. And I'll read that statement. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time, via teleconference or by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. If you want to make a public comment via teleconference, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom center of the screen, or if you're on an iPad like I am, it's in the top right. Participating by telephone, and you want to make a public comment, please press star nine to raise your hand. For those participating by Zoom or telephone, please wait to be called upon by the city clerk. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less and state the name and community of residence. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Do we have any public comments?
Yes. The city clerk's office has received a few emails, and then I will move to public comment that is in the council chambers and then to Zoom. The first email that the city clerk's office received, which has been distributed to the city council, made available to the public in the back of the room and is posted on our website, is from Ken Green. The second public comment submitted by email is from Brenda Guston. And the third public comment is by Mary Lou Wright. Next, I'm going to move to the public comment cards that I've received in the council chambers. We'll start with Brenda Guston. Brenda, if you'll come forward, you'll have up to three minutes to speak, and then I will move to Dennis.
Hello. Nice to start. Thank you. I respectfully submit my comments. The April 5th grading on the Old Cassis property now owned by TruMark Development was a multiple offense of unpermitted grading in a sensitive riparian area. Indiscriminate and unpermitted grading without a permit is not weed abatement. If a property owner clears and grubs more than an acre of land, they need a grading permit. Clearing, grubbing, grading, and erosion control is illegal without a permit. The permit allows a public forum and restrictions to protect the habitat of endangered and protected species of concern known to be part of this environment. of endangered and protected species of concern known to be part of this environmentally important land that is part of the American River ecosystem. More than one acre was disceded, 10 to 12 inches deep, and within drip lines of protected black walnut trees. And over the public easement right after Ranch Cordova citizens had repaired damage done from the also illegal grading in 2021. It is time for the city of Ranch Cordova to support the citizens in our hard work of preserving safe and continuous use of this easement by the public for hiking and riding access along the south side of the American River Parkway and to protect the wildlife, including the endangered bald eagle living here. It is imperative that code violators such as TruMark be held financially accountable with fines for repeated offense and that you demand they restore the damage done to the public easements, drainage easement to the American River, and riparian trees and plants. And in my letter, I submitted the cited codes from the Ranch Cordova municipal code sections 16.44.
Whoever's holding that in front of me, can't see more than about a quarter of it. So you want to back up considerably.
Back up. This is some of the animals that live at the property and also the beautiful 288 black walnut trees that we would like to have protected. And I think that's all I have to share, thank you.
Thank you, next speaker please.
Next speaker is Dennis Charancoff.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I am a resident off of Old Placerville Boulevard. And on October, no. Recently, the 5th of April, at 4:30 in the morning, a car, a black Cadillac sedan, a sporty sedan, drove through, was driving down Happy Lane, ran across Old Placerville Road, through the bush line, across the Old Placerville section that's behind the bush line in front of my property, hit my neighbor's garage, went through the garage, and out the side of the garage and into my house. This incident was on the news. The title of the Good Day Sacramento report, you can find it online, is named Car Crashes Into Ranch Cordova Home. Well, the correction, it should be corrected because it should be plural, homes, my neighbors and my own. Basically, thank God, no one got hurt. Everyone walked away unscathed. The driver is in police custody, was put into police custody. Alcohol was not involved per se, because we could, we did not detect any, we couldn't smell any. But the police didn't determine to that, that the person should be, the suspect should be taken into custody. What my neighbors and I would like the city council to look into is putting a barrier down in the, through the bush line along Old Placerville Road. Basically, there's the main road, there's the main road, and then there's a side road. And basically, in that bush line, we would like some sort of a barrier put up so that cars don't stop crashing into my house. My neighbor's house, this is the second time they got hit with a car. And then another neighbor, one house down, recently, in October of 2020, a drunk driver piled up the cars in their driveway, on a truck. Totally DUI, open cans, open cans in the car and everything. So I would like the city council to do something about investigating the incident and proposing that some sort of temporary barriers or more permanent barriers be installed while, while there's an investigation of how to permanently fix the issue. Excuse me?
Where are you at? Old Placerville?
Old Placerville and Happy Lane, right at the corner, right at that T.
Garrett, they have a, Garrett, they have a frontage road in there that is separated from the main part of Old Placerville Road by this tall group of bushes. So if Albert's in the room, maybe he could talk with Dennis?
Yeah, I would suggest that too, I don't know if Albert is there or not.
He's there, he's waving at us right now.
Okay.
That gentleman right there.
I would also.
Dennis, yeah.
Hang on guys, hang on, there's something I want to say. Not only here, but also Astro at Lincoln Village, we've had the exact same problem in the last 15 years or so. And when I first ran city council and walked that neighborhood, the house that's facing Astro, they normally park an SUV in front of their house because they've had a car go right through. So we have a handful of these spots that were designed long before we were a city that we should maybe just have this as a separate discussion item at some point in the future to discuss not only where your home is, but in Lincoln Village, there's like, I can't think of, there's like two other ones. Where we've had direct collisions because you have a really long straight road that ends with basically a T. And this is one, and there's a couple other. In your case, you actually have trees and some other things in the way, yet that clearly didn't slow them down. So yeah, but I would connect in with Albert on this, but, and then see if we have some staff report on recommendations of what else to do, because maybe we wrap this into our conversations around Paloma too, because we've been looking at that too. Thank you, thank you for coming tonight.
Yes sir. Any questions maybe?
No, please do.
Just a clarification, this was like Happy Lane, northbound, through the bushes, across the frontage road into two houses.
Yes sir, through one house and into mine.
It's amazing how these things happen, but yeah, we need to identify those locations in town and do something to protect those houses, particularly when it's happened more than once, it's pretty outrageous.
Yes sir.
One second. It's Happy Lane, if we're clean homes, it's the one that wraps around the ether. It deadens, I know exactly where it is, and I recall the last time it hit. And the one on Lincoln Village at Astro, I think it's happened twice in 20 years. So there are some poorly designed streets over there that we should be looking at, you're right. Thank you.
And recently, there was also a car crash right there at Happy Lane and Old Placerville with a multiple car crash, with one of the cars like flipping over and everything. People seem to want to cut off big trucks, UPS trucks and everything, driving down Old Placerville. And some people think it's a freeway.
Yeah, they do.
Thank you very much, thank you for your time, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Dennis.
Next counter please.
That's all the speaker cards I have for those in the room. I'm gonna move to Zoom, and we're gonna start with our first caller, telephone number 916-804. You've been unmuted, and you'll have up to three minutes.
Hi everyone, this is Faisa in Lincoln Village. I want to start out by saying thank you Dennis for talking about the traffic issues. I have a neighbor whose home faces Lincoln Village Drive, and she's had crashes in occupied homes to either side of her and has submitted a NTMP application with over 100 signatures asking for help from the city. So hopefully Albert can look at that too. In addition to that, I want to say that we now, our Muslim community, is past the halfway mark for Ramadan. So to our Muslim residents and our Muslim staff members, I want to say Ramadan Mubarak. Asana ba'alaikum, wa rahmatullahi wa barakatuh. I would like to say to our Muslim youth, I am very proud of you if you're maintaining your fast and you're almost there, keep it up. And lastly, I would like to say that I am proud of the California Assembly for passing the ACR 168, which is a bill that officially recognizes the month of Ramadan. So, and thank you to Ken Cooley's office, of course, for sponsoring the bill. It was unanimously approved on April 7th. That's all I had to say today, thank you very much for letting me speak, have a nice night.
Thank you Faisa, next speaker please.
The next speaker is telephone number 213-308. You have been unmuted, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Hello.
Yes we can, go ahead.
Can I speak on SB 793?
Please speak on anything that's not on our agenda tonight, go ahead.
Okay, so it's not on the agenda, okay. As I know it, as I understand this, 793 is about the smoking ban on flavors and menthol.
No ma'am, that'll be coming up at a, excuse me, that'll be coming up at a different time in the agenda. That's an item that's actually agendaized, so we'll.
Oh, it is on the agenda, do you know what item number it is?
Item 11.1.
11 what?
11.1.
11.1, and should I hold on until then?
Hang on one sec, if somebody asks me a question, let me go ahead and answer please. So yeah, you'll want to wait until 11.1, that'll be our first item under public hearings.
Okay, and can we hold on till then, or will it be hours from now?
I'm not really sure when we'll get to it, but we have other items to get to first. So when we get to that agenda, that's when we'll take public comment on the tobacco ordinance.
Okay, and I can raise my hand at that time?
You can.
Thank you so much for your information.
Thank you. Seeing no other public commenters, we will move on to council reports, and we'll start with Councilor Gatwick.
Thank you. So happy Easter, and hope everyone had a great, he's risen, and risen indeed. And I was, after Easter, we did a tree planting with me, Donald and I. That was great to go to Cordova Meadows, we took the kids out. The thing is, with all of these tree planting, I always find that there's a ton of volunteers because Ranch was awesome, and never enough trees. And so our kids are the ones that got out there and started digging, and they asked us to jump in there. And Donald and I shoveled like a little bit of dirt, and then the boys took over after that, so that was awesome. Excited. We posed with.
We tied, we told lines on the trees.
Yeah, we told, we tied the trees and the lines, and it was fun because the lady that they did the tree for actually had, the tree planting group had a 25-year-old or 17-year-old tree that was basically like 30 feet in the air, that was one of the original ones they had planted. So it's great to see us out there doing that. David can go into a long reason why beautification, clean air, and all the amazing stuff that goes into putting trees into a community. I'm excited because I got asked by BizX, I'll be doing a speaker, talking about Ranch Cordova, why it's a great place to have a business, and cybersecurity. So if you want to be bored to tears and hear about internet stuff, we'll be there. And then I haven't had a meeting with any of my commissions yet, but I'm planning to have a meeting with the library with hopefully some very exciting news for everybody. That's it, thank you.
Thank you Gary. I don't think we have Siri on, so we will move to Councilmember Sander.
Thank you Mr. Mayor. Well, I'm glad that everyone had a great Easter holiday. It was of course a very important holiday for many, whether you are egg hunting, or whether you are a Christian and celebrating the hearts of the holiday. But in any case, I'm glad to see Ranch Cordova was out. It almost felt like a normal holiday again post-COVID, so that was exciting. I've attended a bunch of meetings, regional sand last week, school district meeting last week where we talked about school facilities, sort of the outlook for school facilities. And RCA meeting last week, there is a huge push for youth signups in sports, and we are seeing some record turnouts in various sports. Girl softball and Little League each have record turnouts for their seasons. Soccer is anticipating the same, and there is a huge need for officials and coaches, particularly in soccer. So if you are interested in coaching, it is not hard. They basically have coaching in a box for you if you want to do it. Ranch Cordova Soccer is eagerly seeking, seeking coaches.
And don't feel bad if you get beat by the council member, because I appreciate you guys coming out. But my kids are number one.
Because some of these, because some of these council member coaches don't know what they're doing.
I am amazing at football, what are we talking about?
The other football. But in any case, RCA, great meeting, there's a lot of excitement in youth sports out there, so that is good to see. It's great for our kids. Kids' Day is coming up this Saturday, speaking of kids, nobody wants to miss that. If you've got a young'un who's interested in doing some fun stuff, go to Hagan Park on Saturday. The place will be hopping, and that's not an Easter joke. Let's see, also.
David, David, talk about Republic coming.
Oh yes, so we have, speaking of soccer, we have our local professional soccer team will be there doing clinics, playing games, doing giveaways, so the Sac Republic will be on site in Hagan Park. So you can go there, hang out with the pros, your kids can get all excited. And you can sign up for Ranch Cordova Soccer while you're there. Even if you want to be a coach, you can sign up to do that while you're there too. As well as all sorts of other opportunities will be there for kids. Everything from health to fitness, to educational supports, to other activities you can do with your kids. Food, lots of giveaways, bicycle safety, all kinds of stuff going on there. This is a big event that's easy to get around and easy to participate in, and you don't want to miss it. This is like the number one kids' event going on in Ranch Cordova. Some of you may have seen the youth art show that's going on right now at the MAC. I don't know, is that still continuing? I'm not even sure.
Oh yeah, at least through this week.
Yeah, at least, yeah, at least through this weekend. You don't want to miss this youth art show, it is really.
There's lots of things you can buy.
Really, really impressive. And what's cool about it is some of the kids who have submitted stuff, now these are grade school kids through high school, some of the kids who have submitted stuff to the art show actually sold it, which means that technically, they became actual professional artists at the student art show. It was really, really cool to see that happen. It's part of our overall arts push here in Ranch Cordova, and of course, once again, an opportunity for kids. So you want to check that out. I've been spending a lot of time coaching, I guess this is one of those traditional things. You know, Garrett and Donald, if you're coaching, we have to do, we have to apologize to the neighboring jurisdictions for beating them badly. So it's happened again, you know, our track stars went out to a meet on Saturday and just sort of dominated in some events. So such a shame, but so great for our kids, really, really proud of them.
You're far better than I, I wouldn't apologize for any of it.
I agree.
All right, that is my report, thank you.
Thank you David, Linda, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks for bringing up the art show again. I have a granddaughter who is exhibiting, and yes, her piece is for sale. And what's cool about it David, it is, you're right, it's elementary through high school, but it even includes Sea Chat. There's at least two different exhibits that the kids at Sea Chat did. And it just, the variety is amazing. The professionalism of some of the kids who are really perfecting their art and obviously have very far to go in the art world is really outstanding. My routine meeting was Regional Transit, and they are still trying to cooperate with the city of Sacramento to do one of those safe parking sites at the Roseville Road Station. But unfortunately, they thought they had an agreement with the city about really critical things like security and oversight and stuff like that, and it all seems to be evaporating. So nobody's real sure where that's gonna go. But it is unfortunately, whatever they are able to work out there is gonna be a model for what the rest of the city of Sacramento is able to do if there are unused sections of regional transit stations. So it's really critical they get it right. And on a positive note, Regional Transit on Friday for Earth Day, they're offering free rides in the spirit of saving the environment, saving the air, air quality. And Donald and I participated with city staff in a wonderful groundbreaking to celebrate the Metro Fire Training Center on Zimphandell. That thing has been trying to get off the ground for over 10 years now. That thing has been trying to get off the ground for over 10 years now. And they've been to DC numerous times trying to get money to really create a, like a Western Regional Training Center and it hasn't happened. So what they've been able to accomplish now is really, it's really very apropos for the times. We've all been sitting here glued to the TV for almost six weeks now watching the unthinkable circumstances that our emergency personnel enter when they are going into an area that has been destroyed, whether it was by fire or explosion or whatever. And so this training center is actually seeking to recreate all of those situations, whether it's an office building or an apartment complex or a multi-story building. There's just a whole host of different situational assets out there that they're going to create that will, that will help them train firefighters and emergency personnel from at least the Western United States, if not the whole country. And the reason they did this is the fact that our Assembly Member, our colleague Ken Cooley, has applied to the state for a $44 million grant to get Phase Two of this thing built. The airplane is going to go off to some other use because anyway you look at it, we have way more need to deal with wildfires in California than we do actually with airplane emergencies. So it will be replaced with something else that will be much more valuable to our firefighters and our emergency personnel. And lastly, speaking of a couple of things, first of all, I am informed by one of our former planning commissioners that one of our other former planning commissioners, Art Smith, has passed away in his home in Oregon. And then one of Rancher Cordova's original firefighters, Dick James, has passed away. And another, one of what Shelley always calls our tall trees, Steve Hagan, has passed away. So I would ask that we adjourn tonight in honor of those wonderful tall trees whom we really treasure. We treasure their memories. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Can you text me those names?
Yes.
I'm writing down. Thank you. So I'll go somewhat in order of the things that I attended. I took a little bit of vacation with the family, so I didn't have as many things on my calendar lately. I did attend the grand opening of the SAC Platinum Realty Office that's down here next to the Rayleys in Antholia and our good friend Mark Daye, who I believe is probably one of the most prolific Realtors in this region, who's served this region for, I don't know, a bunch of years already, opened a very nice office in town. Congratulations to them. Linda and I, Linda, I don't know if you mentioned this one, but Linda and I attended a concert at KP International. I think Linda, you were there. It was just Bob and Cyrus. Anyway, I presented our resolution or proclamation that we passed earlier this, or last month about the war in Ukraine and presented that to, I believe, a representative from the House of Ukraine. And it was shortly after they played the Ukrainian National Anthem and the US National Anthem. A lot of you, I believe three of us are going to Cap de Cap this year, which is less than two weeks away now. I'm again leading the community resources, which is the Homeless and Housing Team. For those of you who haven't been in DC in a while, I will tell you it is a much different place than the last time we went. Forget COVID. After an insurrection, it's a lot harder to get into the Capitol Building or to go visit your congressman. They're limiting how many people can go. Security's got to be done this week. So it's a much more logistical nightmare than it's ever been in the past. And I think our team for Cap de Cap is upwards of 40 people now, so some people are going to probably be joining by Zoom. Cyrus, or I'm sorry, Garrett had brought this up, but yeah, we did have the planting, the tree planting in Cordova Meadows. Again, the first time in two years that we've been able to hold one of those. So it was really great to see. I want to say what, upwards of 25 people showed. That's not including Garrett and I and our kids. So it was, it was a great gathering and it felt really nice. I think, David, you kind of mentioned it. What was it? They just felt like, or the Easter finally, it kind of feels like that. The first holiday that we've had, it seems somewhat normal. And it feels like an event like that, like finally we're back to doing these things that just seem kind of perfunctory and just, you know, something we did on a Sunday or a Saturday. Yeah, the soccer lesson, I will also just plug my moving with the mayor initiative because I will be participating in that lesson or class with SAC Republic along with other kids. I don't know if any of my kids are showing up because I think they all have Little League games and then we leave right from there for Rivercat today for Rancher Little League is that day at noon. So it's a really packed Saturday coming up, but hopefully people can come out. It's a great free event for the kids and there's a lot of great resources on top of that. There's a lot of dentist office there and other things that you can do to make sure your kids stay healthy and a lot of fun stuff to do. And then, yeah, the Metro Fire thing, I know I got asked to do that, I want to say the night before, but it was a great event. Really showed, I think, kind of the synergy that Rancher Cordova is when it comes to public safety. If you think about that facility, you think about CalOES, you think about the National Guard Headquarters now, all within a mile of each other in Rancher Cordova. Like we're, I think I said it's something like, we're the heart or the epicenter of public safety in California, really is in Rancher Cordova. And the forethought that we all had knowing those things were going to come at some point and we built 2,000 hotel rooms for them to stay in and great restaurants in a barrio district for them to have a drink in, I think we were really thinking ahead of ourselves about what kind of things we could attract into our city. But hopefully, one of the things that was shared was like, there were letters of support for that, for the bill that Ken has from LA Fire, from San Diego Fire, from Fresno, from Orange County, I want to say. And I was just, it was just ringing into my ears that how great it was that all these people from out of town want to come here and train and hopefully spend some of their disposable income in our city. So great things, really appreciate all of the work everyone's had lately. And with that, we will move on to the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be very brief with my comments. I think just about everything has been already mentioned. Just wanted to also add that last Friday on April 15th, there was the monthly Cordova Council luncheon. And our presenter to that day was our Public Works Director, Albert Stricker, who spoke and presented on tens of millions of dollars of public works improvements and projects that have been either built or under construction. So unfortunately, I was not able to attend, but I have heard very positive feedback on the presentation. I wanted to take this opportunity and thank Albert for taking the time to make that presentation. That's really all I have to share. I think everything else has already been shared. Thank you.
Thanks, Cyrus. So with that, we'll move on to Consent Calendar Items. Consent Calendar Items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull on an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Let me start by asking, do we have any public comment on the consent calendar?
The City Clerk's Office has not received any public comment for items on the consent calendar and I do not see any hands that are raised in Zoom.
I do not either. So with that, call. Anything to be called?
I will move approval of our consent calendar items 9.1 through 9.8.
Motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Budge, a second by Gatewood. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati is absent. Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Right. Hey. Hey, for scorekeeping purposes, Mr. Parliamentarian, that's 4-0-1 with Siri not here, right? Or is it 4-0?
4-0-1.
Okay, thanks. I forgot how that works. Okay.
I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. Mayor. 4-0 with her not here, it's 4-0.
Yeah, because Siri didn't abstain, she just...
Okay, cool. Thank you. Consent Public Hearing Items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull on items for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. And we are on consent public hearing items. First, do we have any, actually, I need to open the public hearing, right? Yeah, so I opened the public hearing. Do we have any public comment on these?
Yes, both items.
Both items. We have public comments?
Yes.
We're going to continue one of these. Okay. So I'm going to remind everyone that's here to comment on item 10.1. We are not going to move that forward tonight. But that will be continued. If you still want to make your public comment, let us know now.
It's also important to note that we got a public comment, written public comment on these items.
They still get that test before we move the item. So if we have it for both of them, then we'll just take 10.1 first if there are public commenters. See, you can read the public comments and then if there are members of the audience there that wish to make public comment, now is your time to do so. Again, reminding you, we are not going to move forward on this tonight.
Would you like me to start?
Go ahead, Stacy.
Okay, so I have...
Let's go ahead with the email public comments, then in the room, then Zoom.
So the only comments that I...
Maybe Stacy should read the item into the agenda.
Sure. Since we have public comment on both of them, we can't pass them as consent. So 10.1, go ahead.
A resolution approving Sunridge Lot J, Village Four, tentative subdivision map, special development permit and major design review project number DD 10028. The public comment that we did receive for this item for 10.1 is an email from Michael Yearwood and it has been distributed to the city council. It's been made available to the public in the back of the room and it's also available on the city's website. That's the public comment that we received for that item.
Okay. And do you have commenter cards in the room?
I do not, not for 10.1.
I thought you did.
Okay, let's go to Zoom. If you're wishing to make a public comment on item 10.1, now would be your chance to do so. Again, knowing that the applicant has asked to continue the item. I don't see any hands raised. I'll entertain a motion to continue to a date uncertain.
Do you want to close the public hearing?
Mayor Terry, are you on 10.2?
No, 10.1.
I'm on 10.1.
Okay, thank you.
Should we close the public hearing?
I can close the public hearing on item 10.1. I'm going to have to open it in seconds for 10.2. So I'll close the hearing. I got it. I'll close the hearing for 10.1 and I'll entertain a motion to continue.
All right, then I will move that we continue item 10.1. Adam or anybody, did they select a date certain?
No, Council. They have not selected a date. I think the applicant is aware of some concerns by residents and they would like to work with the community to address those concerns before they come back to the council.
And I will move that we continue it to a date uncertain.
Second.
I have a motion by Budge, a second by Sander. Sorry about that. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati is absent. Vice Mayor Budge?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Aye. I was about to go grab my gavel off the wall and realize it's in my office at City Hall. So I don't have a gavel for it. Anyway, okay. Motion carries. Item 10.2, we'll open the public hearing. Do we have any public comments on this item?
The public comment that the City Clerk's Office has received is an email from Michael Kohler. That email has been distributed to the city council. It's been made available to the public and it is also on the city's website.
It also seems logical that Stacy would read in the item.
Sure, go ahead.
Item 10.2 is Shalaco Large Lot and Shalaco West Small Lot Tentative Subdivision Maps Project Number PLND 1121-0021.
Thank you. So do we have public comment cards for this?
No, we do not.
Okay, so in the future, if we just have the emails, I think we can leave those on consent. We don't have actual commenter these times?
Not if we're going to continue it.
Well, no, no, for that one, but I'm saying in this case, we probably could have just passed that as consent. Because if we just had so many comments and then you have it, we don't really need to pull the item. We only need to pull it if we need to entertain comments. Is there anybody in Zoom that wants to comment on this? But if it's just the email in the future, let's just...
Sorry.
Move it as consent.
There's no public comments in Zoom.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I will move we continue item 10.2.
No, 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 no. This one's not being continued. Only 10.1.
We already did 10.1. This is 10.2.
Right, but you're moving to continue it.
We continue item 10.2 to a date uncertain.
Linda, this applicant, this applicant 10.2 is not requesting a continuance.
That's what it says in my agenda.
Is it? Okay.
Oh, it's actually agendaized that way. Is that what you're wanting to do, Cyrus? I think I even asked you this before we started.
Yeah, I believe that's what the applicant has requested. I apologize.
And we left this on consent. Okay. I have a motion by Budge. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati is absent. Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Aye. I hope we did that right.
Yeah, the agenda I'm looking at online doesn't have it listed for continuance, so probably a little confusion on that one.
Yeah, what I'm holding does say that. I see it, Linda, but I read this earlier today and it did not say that. And the direction that I had gotten from staff like an hour ago was to continue 10.1 and 10.2 was fine. So let's make sure we button that up next time. Okay, with that, we'll move on to public hearing items and our first item will be 11.1 Flavor Tobacco Ordinance. I believe, is it Mike or is it Adam that's going to start this for us?
I'm planning we'll lead the item and then I will...
Oh, I see our lead on here. Okay, yep.
Good evening, Mayor Terry and City Councilmembers. I'm here tonight to present the flavored tobacco ordinance first reading. Just wait till the PowerPoint is up on the screen. Excuse us, Mayor Terry. We're trying to pull up the PowerPoint presentation here. Bear with us, everyone. We're trying to pull up the... Bear with us, everyone, we're trying to pull up the correct PowerPoint presentation. All right, here we go. It's been the Monday-est Monday of the week for everybody, so thank you for hanging on with us. So as you may recall, um, on January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, city council adopted an urgency ordinance, establishing a temporary moratorium on the establishment and operation of new electronic cigarette retailers, lounges, and vapor bars. This ordinance was subsequently extended on February twenty-second, and staff continued to prepare an ordinance to prohibit the sale of flavored tobacco products in the city. On March seventh, the city council discussed key policy considerations that would be incorporated into the proposed ordinance. Included in the proposed ordinance are the following amendments to the municipal code, the revision to Title Four, Chapter Four Point Zero Seven. This will include definitions for flavored tobacco product, characterizing flavor and smoking lounge, and a revised definition for tobacco paraphernalia. It also includes an exemption for smoking lounge establishments, which include hookah lounges and cigar lounges, a one thousand dollar fine for each violation of the flavored tobacco ban, and an ordinance enforcement date of ninety days after the new ordinance goes into effect. Title Six, Chapter Six Point Eight Six, will be repealed and deleted because these provisions regarding distribution of tobacco products to minors will already be included in Chapter Four Point Oh Seven. Title Twenty Three, Chapter Twenty Three Point Nine One Nine Point One Hundred, will also be revised to amend the minimum age for sale of tobacco products to twenty-one years old, consistent with state and federal law. Now, subsequent discussions and input from community advocates and organizations highlighted their concerns about the exemption of smoking lounges from the flavored tobacco ordinance. These organizations expressed that the exemption was not specific enough, citing that the proposed definition of smoking lounges is too broad. They further expressed that the exemption should be limited to only hookah lounges that offered flavored shisha for onsite consumption, and that offsite retail sales of all flavored tobacco should be prohibited. To address these concerns, city staff proposes the following additional changes to the municipal code. So these would be additional changes to the proposed changes that are presented in your packet. This includes amending the exemption to apply to existing establishments that have been formally permitted to allow the onsite smoking of tobacco products, prohibiting the retail sales of all flavored tobacco products at these existing establishments, except for flavored shisha tobacco products, only allowing the consumption of this flavored shisha tobacco products onsite at these existing establishments. So that means no flavored shisha tobacco products may be removed from the premises, and deleting the proposed definition for smoking lounges. For this item, staff is presenting the city council with some options on how you want to, on how you can proceed. Option one is waiving the first reading and introducing the ordinance with the proposed amendments that were included in your packet. Waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance with the proposed amendments and the additional amendments to clarify the hookah lounge exemption. And option three is to continue the first reading and introduce the ordinance at the next regular meeting of the city council for further discussion. Depending on which option city council, city council wishes to choose, the second reading of the ordinance will be held at the next regular meeting of the city council. Additional minor changes and cleanup provisions may be forthcoming. The ordinance would then go into effect thirty days after the adoption, and enforcement of the ordinance would occur ninety days after the effective date. That's the end of my presentation, thank you.
Through, through the mayor, if I may supplement with just a few comments.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Um, Arlene did a outstanding job of, uh, summarizing, uh, quite extensive conversations that have occurred after the agenda was posted in response to comments from, uh, community advocates on this issue. Um, and I believe if you were to select option number two, we do have some language that we would be able to show the council in particular that she described on that topic. I would also note, however, that we received this afternoon two additional, um, comments from, uh, an advocate for tobacco-free kids, who was speaking, um, on issues that you may well hear from the community this evening, raising two additional topics that we have not had the opportunity to incorporate into language that is in front of the council yet. So you may hear a couple of other issues raised this evening that are of interest to, to advocates.
Thank you, Arlene. Um, so with that, let me open the public hearing. And, well, colleagues, what do you want to do? You want to ask staff questions, or do we want to take public comment first?
Public comment, please.
Any other issue with that? Seeing none, uh, Stacy, let's go ahead and do public comment.
The city clerk's office received a few emails via, um, email with regards to public comment. The first is Jaime Rojas. The second is Luz Garcia. Third is Ari Bulfine. And fourth is Jen Grand Lee Hano. And we also have a number of hands that are raised in Zoom, and we have a couple of speaker cards. So I'm gonna call on those who are here in the council chambers first. Mandeeb Singh, if you'd like to come forward, and following Mandeeb will be Sandeeb. You'll have up to three minutes.
Hey, council members, uh, my name is Mandeeb Singh, and we own the convenience store right over there on, the Chevron right on Zimfendale. So I've heard some comments and, you know, about this topic. Just wondering, you know, about the, this flavored, uh, ban, and is it, why it's, you know, for everything? I think it's more targeted towards children. So I think the flavored vapes and stuff are what's more targeted towards the children. You know, not the menthol cigarettes and, you know, uh, the, the wraps and stuff. So if that's what, you know, is being proposed, I would, you know, say that, you know, we should look more towards, uh, the flavored vapes, not, you know, the, every single, you know, tobacco product. And another thing that I haven't seen brought up is enforcement. So if, you know, this does go forward, uh, who's going to be enforcing this? And, you know, and how much enforcement will be, um, out there to, to go into retailers and see if, you know, they're complying with, you know, the, uh, ban? And so that's why, you know, I think that, you know, if all these things aren't met, you know, especially enforcement, that we should wait towards, you know, the state's decision. You know, if they ban it, so there's more clear instruction and more resources for enforcement also. Uh, so those are my comments, uh, thanks, everyone.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Sandeeb.
Hi, city council, my name is Sandeeb Kenda. Um, my family's owned our business off of Folsom Boulevard, uh, ten four six nine Folsom Boulevard, uh, for about twenty years. Um, so just coming back into it, uh, one thing that we've noticed is, is mostly just anything that has to do with the tobacco, like Mandeeb said, it's related to the vapes. Vapes is the biggest problem that we're even seeing ourselves. Um, when it comes to cigarettes, uh, cigarettes are mainly, our customer clientele is just older. It's, they're well over the twenties, thirties, forties, um, that are going for the cigarettes. And then even with the wraps and so forth. One proposal I would recommend is trying to go down to breaking down into what is gonna be allowed, what is gonna be, pretty much what's gonna be banned. And one thing we recommend is just banning all flavored, um, vapes and so forth.
Okay, we are going to go to Zoom, and I'm gonna start with the first speaker, Alex. I'm gonna go ahead and unmute you, you'll have up to three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, good evening, mayor and city council, my name's Alex Winston, I'm with Parents Against Vaping E-Cigarettes, and I'd like to share my personal story with you. Um, in twenty seventeen, my son started vaping menthol nicotine products at his high school, and he still does, three years later, at age eighteen. My husband, who was trying to quit, was vaping menthol, um, and died at age forty-two of a severe heart arrhythmia with five hundred milligram levels of unregulated nicotine in his system, leaving me a single mother of four kids. My husband was mixed, raised Black and Native American, two of the highest-risk populations to suffer from tobacco-related health disparities and the predatory marketing of menthol tobacco products by the tobacco industry. His life mattered. As a result of the impact of losing my husband, obviously, a lot of stress was created in my life, and I suffered some serious bouts of TMJ, and I cracked one of my molars in half. And I just quickly want to say thank you, um, to the Rancho Cordova Dental Group, who runs a residency program over on Olson Drive, who was able to give me a dental implant at reduced cost. This is a community service that she offered to me through my dentist, um, and it was huge. So just definitely, I wanted to put that out there. Um, also, in good housekeeping practices, um, I humbly request that the definition of tobacco products be updated to current definitions that are broader with no exemptions. Um, any amount of nicotine is harmful and addictive to youth and others. Um, we also implore you to not include an exemption that would still allow the sale of flavored hookah. This exemption is being falsely touted by industry hookah lobbyists as protective of cultural authenticity. However, these cultures and their children deserve the same protections as everyone else. Health equity is achieved by policies that apply to all cultures, regardless of race, ethnicity, socioeconomic status, or creed. Please vote in favor of the proposed flavored tobacco product ordinance, including hookah, menthol, and e-cigarette, and the proposed changes for the best policy possible. No person, business, or government should profit off people's lives. We were too late for my son, who's already addicted, and my husband, who is no longer with us. Let's not be too late for the next generation. Thank you so much for your leadership on these issues and for your time.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Carter Nelson. Carter, I'm gonna go ahead and unmute you, you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Okay, great, thank you, can you hear me?
We can, go ahead.
All right, good evening, council members and Mayor Terry. This is Carter Nelson, speaking on behalf of Tobacco-Free Kids. The campaign for tobacco supports the efforts of Rancho Cordova to address the issue of flavored tobacco products. Flavored tobacco products are designed to alter the taste and reduce the harshness of tobacco products, so they are all, almost always more appealing for beginners who are almost always kids. Prohibiting the sale of flavored tobacco products in all tobacco retailers is a critical step that will help protect children living in Rancho Cordova from the unrelenting efforts by the tobacco industry to hook them to a deadly addiction. We support this policy with the proposed changes to the definitions, the exemptions language, and the elimination of the new penalty on individuals. We look forward to continuing our work together to protect the youth of Rancho Cordova. A special thank you to Mayor Terry and the city attorney's office for all the work on this ordinance and on addressing our concerns around the exemption language. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Carter, next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Eldon Price. Eldon, you have been unmuted, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Good evening, my name is Eldon Price, I've been on multiple council meetings with you guys. I'm a responsible retailer in many different towns, and I'm here to oppose this, um, due to many factors. Uh, my main factor would be is, um, it's going to vote in California, um, and we have a right to vote on ordinances that we would like imposed statewide. And the other part of it is, 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 is I do multiple towns, and I've already seen the effect of it in the Sacramento area where they're selling it out of their fronds. Uh, I don't think this ban is gonna have the effect that we think. They just drive over one town, buy it, bring it back, and sell it illegally. We all want to look out for our youth, that's why we have certain programs in effect. As a retailer, we pay thousands of dollars a month to have our sites policed, to make sure we're a responsible retailer. We, we, we eliminate, uh, the employees that do not believe in responsible retailing. And, uh, you know, with the pandemic and everything, we've already been hit drastically. And now we're gonna take away a stream of revenue that we used to pay to be a responsible retailer. We have three different programs that we initiate, you know, um, to cover this agenda. And it's not just for flavor bans, it's for the flavored alcohol, it's for the, you know, there's many other aspects we could be on the bandwagon for, for our children. And we're just looking at this one, and really, if it's going to a statewide vote, I do not see a need for us to approve it now. I appreciate everything city councils do, but I think this is an overstretch. I believe us as citizens have a right to vote on bans of products. So I would hope you would take that into consideration. Let it go to November where it's supposed to go, so it'd be a statewide ban. So instead of letting the revenue for just Rancho Cordova switch over to the next town and destroying our businesses that we have there, we're losing thirty to forty percent of our revenue at our flavor ban sites already, which means that we are offering less jobs to people. You know, we offer jobs based on revenue, and what we're doing is we're taking away that revenue. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Eldon, next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Monica. Monica, I'm gonna go ahead and unmute you, you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Good evening, council members, my name is Monica Aliaha, and I'm the Community Impact Director for the American Heart Association. We appreciate your leadership in addressing the issue of youth tobacco use. Our organization urges you to strengthen the proposed ordinance by ending the sale of all flavored tobacco products without exemptions. It's no accident that tobacco companies flooded the market with fruit, mint, and candy-flavored products. These flavors are specifically designed to entice kids and communities of color, and that's exactly what happened. Hookah companies also target new users with flavors like mango, red gummy bear, and ortapa. This has made flavored hookah use popular among youth and young adults, especially Black and Hispanic high school students. The bottom line is that all flavored tobacco products, including flavored e-cigarettes, cigars, and hookah, are incredibly addict, addicting, alluring to kids, and deadly. Rancho Cordova residents deserve to be protected from all flavored tobacco products in all locations. We urge you to remove the, the proposed administrative fine of a thousand dollars on any person who violates the ordinance. This approach to enforcement is problematic and could lead to equity concerns. Thank you for your consideration and work to prioritize the health of residents. Ending the sale of all flavored tobacco products without exemptions and ensuring equitable enforcement will protect future generations of Rancho Cordova residents from the predatory tactics of big tobacco, thank you.
Thank you, Monica, next speaker, please.
The next speaker is telephone number nine one six eight zero four. You've been unmuted, and you'll have up to three minutes.
Hello, this is Pfizer Muggel in Lincoln Village. And I would have liked to have seen the written comments, um, on this item and the other items on today's agenda. They are not attached, um, if we could please update the website, that would be wonderful. I would like to echo what, uh, I believe Monica, uh, before me, and, um, before her Alex, uh, what they're saying, and Alex, I'm so sorry for your loss. I know that flavored tobacco hits differently in the youth community, and also. and also in the Black community. And so I really wanna elevate what these women said before me. I support what they're saying. Thank you.
The next speaker.
Next speaker.
Next speaker is Jen Grandliano.
Good evening, Council. My name's Jen Grandliano with the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network. I'm the Government Relations Director for Northern California. And so we thank you for taking on the issue of flavored tobacco and the industry's targeting of youth, communities of color, and LGBT folks. Any policy that aims to reduce tobacco use in our community must have two main components: remove all flavored tobacco products from all the stores, and a strong enforcement mechanism. The ordinance as written tonight does not meet this benchmark. And unless amended, we would have to oppose. We've been working with the local coalition for some time now on this policy. And we would very much like a strong policy to move forward. And we believe we can get there, a policy that meets Council's intentions. We believe we can get there with three key changes. Narrow, the first is to narrow the exemption to only apply to 21 and up hookah lounges for onsite consumption only, not retail sales, as was mentioned in the PowerPoint presentation. And that's because flavored shisha use is on the rise among youth. Among individuals who are not current smokers, those who had tried hookah were more likely to report intent to try cigarettes soon. And more than 1 in 5 high school students in one study first learned about flavored shisha by seeing a hookah bar in their community. We don't support any exemption for any tobacco retailer. But if that's the only way forward, then that exemption should be as tight as possible. Secondly, we ask that you broaden the tobacco product definition up to current standards to ensure all tobacco products are included and that this is easily enforced. The current definition is outdated and does not cover existing and emerging common tobacco products, such as synthetic nicotine, which we're seeing pop up, very cheaply flavored products all over the place, especially in schools. We can provide the model language from Public Health Law Center, which specializes in California local tobacco policy and provides free legal TA. And then, thirdly, we ask you to remove the $1,000 fine for individuals found in violation. The license suspension and revocation that you have existing in the ordinance are sufficient and best practice, and ensure that the licensed holder is liable. A $1,000 fine for any individual found in violation is an overstep, misses the point of holding the store owner accountable, and gets into the arena of community policing, which we do not support. So the current ordinance falls short of what we believe the Council's intent is, which is to protect the community from big tobacco. And we applaud you for that effort. But unless amended, we would have to oppose. And we don't wanna have to do that when we're so close to a good ordinance. So we urge you to make these changes, so we can gladly support. And we can't wait for the state to take action on an issue we're experiencing locally and now. You have the power to make the changes tonight. That can be enforced here, and we ask that you do so.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Haley Hodges. Haley, you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
And really quickly, Haley, before you start, I just wanna, I'm gonna name off who else we have waiting here. So we have Marissa, Ryan Kimberley, Carol S. Wilmore. We have a phone number that's 213-308, and Lori Comstock. That is the order and the final order of commenters tonight. Go ahead, Haley.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Well, my name's Haley. I'm a community member in the Rancho area who is concerned about how the potential flavored tobacco ban ordinance will impact retailers. And as a result, see a loss, a massive loss of revenue for these businesses who keep our city and economy alive. And like others have mentioned, I don't think it makes sense to vote on this issue at this point in the year, when there is a statewide referendum that will determine this issue on the November 22 ballot. I think California should be able to decide on a flavored tobacco ban or not through their vote in the fall. And if you look at recent data from the government, it shows that high school cigarette smoking rates are at an all-time low. And again, as another resident has already said, if you ban those products in this town, people can still get it from another town or online. So I think there's other more pressing issues that the city could be focused on rather than banning flavored tobacco products. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please, will be Ryan. Wait, that was Haley's or Marissa's?
The next speaker is Marissa Greenband. Marissa, you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor Terry and Rancho Cordova Council members. My name is Marissa Greenband. I am the Director of Tobacco Control Programs at Breathe California Sacramento Region. And I also serve as the Chair of our Policy Task Force for the Greater Sacramento Smoke and Tobacco-Free Coalition. This coalition is comprised of public health professionals and community members who are concerned with the impact of the tobacco industry and secondhand smoke issues in Sacramento County. Our goal is to educate and inform localities on tobacco control best practices. We wanna sincerely commend the City of Rancho Cordova for the significant measures it has taken over the last several years to reduce the impact of secondhand smoke, establishing public events, dining areas, multi-unit housing, and more as smoke-free areas in the community, and for removing possession, use, and purchase language from your smoking ordinance in 2020. It's really clear to our coalition that Rancho Cordova is a leader in tobacco control in Sacramento County. And now, your intent to limit the availability of flavored tobacco products in Rancho Cordova is commendable. Our Policy Task Force would like to provide a few points of information around public health and tobacco control best practices. The first is that in any area of tobacco control policy, it's essential to include a comprehensive definition of tobacco products, as my colleagues have mentioned tonight. This will not only account for existing tobacco products being sold today, but also new and emerging products that we know the tobacco industry is developing to secure future profits, such as synthetic nicotine products. Secondly, we want to note that the existing license suspensions and revocations are sufficient and effective methods of handling violations to tobacco retail license policies, whereas monetary fines, with or without possible misdemeanor penalties, carry the high risk of inequitable enforcement among community members. Lastly, we wanna note that the exemptions for any kind of product use minimizes the effectiveness of flavored tobacco ordinances and often complicates enforcement efforts by jurisdictions. When particular flavored tobacco products are exempted from flavored tobacco ordinances, the individuals that use these exempted products are most, the most, are less segmented from the rest of the population and susceptible to continued marketing of addictive products by the tobacco industry. For example, exemptions that allow for the continued sale of flavored hookah products allow flavors like banana custard or white gummy bear to continue to be marketed to the Hispanics and Latinos, who comprise 40% of tobacco, or excuse me, who comprise 40% of hookah users, or college students, whose hookah use is as high as 40% too. Once again, our Policy Task Force sincerely commends the City of Rancho Cordova for continually being on the forefront of tobacco control issues and for your clear prioritization of your community's health and well-being. Thank you for hearing our comments tonight.
Thank you, Marissa. Our next commenter will be Ryan.
Ryan, you've been unmuted.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. And I really appreciate Mayor Terry and the entire Council for bringing this ordinance forward. Again, my name's Ryan McClain. I'm a former resident of Lincoln Village, who still has a lot of family members, including my goddaughter and godson, who live in Rancho Cordova and play in many of the youth sports leagues. It's really important to see this ordinance passed with the strengthened language, as Marissa just lifted up previously. I wanna highlight a few things that I've heard tonight, really addressing some of the comments that we've heard from retailers around the loss of revenues from banning flavored tobacco. One of the things that hurts a lot, when I look at a lot of the communities throughout Rancho Cordova, is that I see a lot of neighborhoods that don't have a lot of fresh food access. And when I think about the retailers who really say that they have a deep care for the community, I'd love to implore them to recover those revenues by introducing more fresh food outlets and whatnot. I know it seems kinda contradictory to have a smoke shop selling fruits and veggies, but I think that speaks to the greater call of what we wanna see in our health-friendly communities. And I think that's one of the great trademarks of Rancho City Council, is that you guys do put a priority on the health and wellness of our residents and our families. And I think that this is a great opportunity to continue to lean into that. I'd also like to, again, echo the previous statements that you've heard before around some of the definition that we wanna see strengthened to exclude all flavored tobacco products. One of the things that I recognize from a public health lens, is I, in my professional career, I'm a public health advocate. And also, I worked with the Campaign for Tobacco-Free Kids, too, just as a advocate, recognizing that we don't just want to make sure that our kids are in healthier places, but our families overall. We have adults who are in their 20s, 30s, 40s, and 50s who are battling addiction at this point. And if you ask them if they could have made a better choice than being addicted to some of the tobacco products they're using, they'll 100% say that I wouldn't want this on anybody else, especially the kids that are following me. So for us to take a forward step and really try to remove that and create more barriers to them having to fight that battle, again, speaks to the nature of care and concern that this community really embraces with our City Council and with our residents. So I thank you for your consideration of this, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ryan. Our next speaker will be Kimberly.
Good evening, Mayor Terry, Vice Mayor Budge, and Council members of Rancho Cordova. My name is Kimberly Bankston Lee with The Soul Project. We understand and appreciate your intent to protect the public's health. Comprehensive policies that limit access to flavored tobacco reduce youth uptake and encourage people who smoke or vape to quit. These types of policies also protect vulnerable communities like African-Americans and people living with poverty, who have been historically preyed upon by the tobacco industry. Exemptions for certain types of flavored tobacco, like menthol and flavored shisha, is a social injustice. Tobacco industry, upon deliberately, sacrifices Black and other communities, like East Indians, Muslims, and Middle Easterners for the benefit of profits. As said by Dr. Arunab Mukherjee, Dr. PH MTH, Associate Professor of Health Sciences, California State University East Bay, corporate co-optation of culture to harm the health of minority populations for the sake of financial benefit is a form of structural racism. Flavored tobacco use is a public health issue in all communities, regardless of race, ethnicity, religion, or age, should be protected. It's important to include the most comprehensive definition to make enforcement easier and to prevent loopholes. A best-practice definition of tobacco would include products containing, made, or derived from tobacco or nicotine, whether natural or synthetic, that is intended for human consumption, whether smoked, heated, chewed, absorbed, dissolved, inhaled, snorted, sniffed, or ingested by any other means, including, but not limited to cigarettes, cigars, little cigars, chewing tobacco, pipe tobacco, blunt wrappers, smokeless tobacco, or snuff. Another best practice places the onus of violations on retailers and not on individuals. Any violations and fines should be the responsibility of the licensee. License suspension and revocation is sufficient, and it's, like I mentioned, a best practice for tobacco retail license enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Carol.
Carol, you've been unmuted.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Council. I'd like to take a moment to speak on behalf of Action on Smoking and Health. We are a nonprofit, a nonprofit tobacco advocacy nonprofit in Washington, DC. We have a program here in California that is funded by the California Department of Public Health entitled "Advancing Momentum for Tobacco-Free California." ASH envisions communities free from the harm caused by tobacco. And that may seem like a large goal. But we really believe that with your efforts to make your community healthier, we will one day get to what ASH calls the "ASH Endgame", where we will be, have a community free from the harm of all tobacco products by phasing out the sale of all tobacco products. Two communities in California so hard have done this, Manhattan Beach and Beverly Hills. And perhaps one day Rancho Cordova will join that list. I'd like to bring some attention, your attention, to a few items that have already been addressed, so I'll be very quick with them. I think that the definition of tobacco, as Ms. Bankston Lee just indicated, would be preferred to the one that is currently in place. It is outdated at this time. I also would like to reiterate that we want the penalty for the ordinance to go against the licensee, not an individual. So removing that as part of the current ordinance would be helpful. And the last thing is regarding your hookah exemption. Preferably, there would be no exemption at all. But the exemption should only be applied to existing hookah smoking lounges for onsite consumption only, and not to extend to the other vape cigar or smoking lounges. I encourage your deep thought in this. I know that Rancho Cordova will be a healthier community for your work that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Ash Wilmore.
Yes, good evening. Hello, Rancho Cordova City Council members and mayor. My name is Satise Wilmore, and I'm calling as a public health retiree. This issue is near and dear to my heart. I managed a tobacco control program for over 30 years. And I lost my dad to cigarette smoking at a premature age of 49. And so I think what you're doing tonight is really a public health prevention measure. It's going well beyond today's city council meeting. It's to protect our future kids, it's to protect our future generations. More than 150 communities have already adopted a flavored tobacco policy. And I would really like to see Rancho Cordova join that list. As a person who's managed a program that was basically in charge of tobacco control, I think it's really important that exemptions is not a part of your policy. It creates extra staff effort for enforcement. It also creates the potential for new incoming retailers wanting to be a part of the exemption, so that they can set up shop inside your city. So I think if the goal is to protect our kids from flavored tobacco products, such as unicorn poop, which we all know is not for adults, is to entice our kids. And it's actually, we have to think about new and emerging products. Did you know that a youth can vape through their lap top? They can insert their flash drive and actually vape and use flavored tobacco products off of their lap top just by sniffing it through a flash drive? So, you know, that's what we have today, but who knows what we might have tomorrow? And we've had local, well-established organizations, as well as religious folk, come into communities across the state of California trying to block local ordinances such as this. So I think what you're doing is marvelous. I think you're in the right direction. I would like to see a stronger policy, more comprehensive definition of tobacco and tobacco products, and really start off with education of the retailers. Your tobacco retail license ordinance will take care of the fines. Thank you so much for this evening, and let's not wait for the state to do anything. This is an urgency ordinance. Let's do something now. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Erica 213-308.
Hi, my name is Olivia Barber. I'm in my 70s. I'm Black, and I'm a smoker. I believe this ordinance should be shut down immediately because it suppresses the vote, voting rights of adult-age voters to speak their piece about this situation of SB 793, which it addresses. The cigarettes have been around for a long time. I don't see where this ordinance is gonna stop kids from vaping. It's gonna decrease revenue for the retailers. The kids are gonna get it somewhere else. And kids are not voters. Their parents are. They should either vote for this ordinance or against it in November under SB 793, or they should parent their children. I am an adult. I choose to smoke, and I don't think anybody has the right to take that from me. I think it's very disingenuous for the American Heart Association and any advocate of this ordinance or any ban on all tobacco products to say- products to say that it is to protect the health of Black and Brown people who, who, who are set upon by the tobacco industry. If you really wanna do something about stopping tobacco, everyone should turn their attention to fighting big tobacco and shutting it all down, not going after individuals who have a free will and a right to do what they wanna do. We're adults. Parent your children and stop coming after us who wanna smoke menthol cigarettes. Uh, like I said, I really do not believe you are going to get the results that you are looking for by this ordinance or anything short of going after big tobacco. Please menthol cigarette smokers alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Lori Comstock.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, Mayor Terry and, um, Honorable Counsel, I have lost many family members to tobacco-related diseases over the years. My father was a smoker. He started smoking as a teenager. He died at the age of thirty-nine due to a tobacco-related disease. I was thirteen. My brothers were nine and eleven, and my sister was only eight years old when he died. My sister started smoking at the age of thirteen and died of lung cancer when she was forty-four. Her sons were fourteen and seventeen when she died. Our family was totally devastated. My mother was also a smoker. She died at age eighty-six of a smoking-related disease. Even though she lived a long life, her health was badly affected over the years. I've lost many other relatives and friends over the years to tobacco-related disease. I lost another friend last night, Easter Sunday. She had been a longtime smoker and suffered serious illnesses over the years thanks to her addiction. She has a loving wife, mother, and grandmother, and her family and friends are devastated. Most people start smoking as teens. The tobacco industry for years has been using flavored tobacco products to addict young people to nicotine and keep them addicted to their deadly products. I ask you to ban flavored tobacco, including menthol-flavored, to stop this deadly cycle of addiction and death. Even though I don't live here in Rancho Cordova, I have friends that do. I don't want to see their children grow up being addicted to tobacco products. Please ban this, please ban flavored tobacco in all forms, e-cigarettes, hookah, vaping, and any other form. They are all just as deadly. Please put an end to the tobacco industry's ability to addict young people and the tobacco retailers selling of flavored tobacco. They don't care about anything except their profits. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, looks like we've had one other hand raised since I gave the order, so I'm gonna go ahead and let that one commenter go. Uh, Dejona or Diana, I'm not sure how I'm pronouncing that right, Bloxton?
Hi. Hi, good evening. Uh, thank you, City Council members. My name is Dejana. I'm a resident of Elk Grove. I'm also an educator. Um, I thank you all for your time. Um, I am appreciative for this moment with you all. I support the ban on, sorry, I'm so nervous. I support the ban on, uh, tobacco sales. Uh, just working with kids every day, I see the impact that simple things have on them, and I think that the tobacco has a really negative effect on them and can really change the trajectory of their lives. Um, so I recognize and appreciate the intention of Council of Rancho Cordova to protect the public with this policy. There are items that do impact the intent to protect the community, make enforcement of specific products difficult, and create issues without equitable enforcement. Um, particularly the retail sales of flavored tobacco products by smoking lounges. I believe that it should be prohibited. No flavored tobacco products purchased at such smoking lounges should be removed from their premises, um, and any exemption should only be applied to the existing hookah smoking lounges for onsite consumption only and not to extend to other, um, vaping lounges, which will help, help lessen the, the way in which students can get in contact with, um, such products. So thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Uh, with that, I believe that concludes our public comments period. I think the city clerk had a couple more emails to read out.
I did. I have a lot of paper over here, so sorry about that. Um, there is, uh, two more emails that the city council did receive and are available in the back of the room. Those were from Kimberly Bankston Lee and Twila Laster. They, um, had a email together and then another from Amanda Simpson. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, with that, we can go to council questions for staff.
Can I go first, Don? You mind?
Sure, go ahead.
All right, um, I don't know if this is a question for the lawyer. Are we concerned? Cause it sounds like a couple of the agencies are concerned about how we enforce, um, that they think we should take away the thousand-dollar fine and go with something else? Does anyone on the, go ahead, Adam?
Thank you very much. Um, yeah, one of, um, thank you, Council member. One of the comments that we, um, received, um, later in the process, um, and haven't had a chance to fully vet, uh, and consider at staff as a staff and therefore don't have a specific recommendation on, I don't believe here tonight. I would defer to Arlene if staff does, but my office does not yet, is, is this request to, um, to delete that. It's something we're certainly very interested in learning more about and could be responsive to. Um, um, but we, you know, we, we, we heard that one, um, quite late and, uh, wouldn't wanna consider it further. Arlene, do you have comments from a planning perspective?
Uh, yes, I believe that the original intent of the one thousand dollar fine would be, um, we would, we would levy it against the business, the retailer itself, and we see that the, the language actually in the post ordinance says "any person." So, uh, we can look at that and make some changes to that language to indicate the original intent, which was to, uh, find the actual business where that violation is occurring.
All right, and there was one other big concern, um, that they had, which was, um, so we're allowing hookah bars to sell it, correct? Or the hookah lounges to sell flavored tobacco?
Correct, right now.
Okay. Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
So, sort of mayor, if I, if I may, to actually help. Um, so, so I think, I, I believe of the, the big three comments, um, the language that we have that Arlene's already summarized does address the issue of, uh, or of the hookah lounge, um, and tightening up that language. Um, with the exception of what I heard, um, perhaps not the, uh, the twenty-one and up. That might be, Arlene, the only piece of that that I'm not sure it fully already addresses. Um, and what I don't believe we have yet addressed is comments you've heard about the definition addressing new synthetic nicotine, new synthetic products.
And they just said smoking in general, like the new stuff that's coming down the line. Can we write an ordinance that basically covers that, or is that something we have to address every time something new comes out? What do you feel like, Adam?
Um, it's, it's difficult to write an ordinance that says, guess what the industry is thinking of. So, um, this is likely a situation where the conversation that we have, the positive conversation we've been having with advocates on this issue will be one that we look forward to continuing and to periodically updating the ordinance as, as new poisonous technologies emerge.
Okay.
And just for clarification, um, one of the proposed changes is to section twenty-three dot nine one nine dot one hundred, which is in the zoning code, and it does indicate, um, the minimum age at twenty-one years. So that's one of the changes that we're proposing. Cause as, as it stands now, that part, um, says eighteen years as adopted.
Thank you.
Counsel, I, I'd be, open up more questions. I, I would say, I just wanna remind you, everyone, from a, from a housekeeping perspective, that we have a pretty loaded agenda tonight. Um, my two cents right now is, as much as I would like to pass this, I feel like we have a lot of moving pieces of, of updating this ordinance, and I think we probably just need to continue it until we can get, um, what, what language I think staff and the advocates at least are, are asking for. I, I will say that I'm a little disappointed with the advocates group because this is not a new thing for us. Um, and for those of you who are even asking about the, the ballot measure, um, we brought this up, I wanna say three years ago unanimously that we wanted to move forward, and then we were given indications from the federal government that if they were going to address it, then they didn't, and then the state legislature was gonna address it, they didn't, and that's why we're here tonight. Um, but I also, in light of a Measure H conversation and a planning commission coming back for maybe the first time in ten years, that if we're ready tonight to button this up and have the language that, that staff feel comfortable with, I think we need to continue it. But with that, I, Linda, David, I don't know if you have any questions for, for staff at this moment.
I would also echo your, uh, comments, Mr. Mayor, and recommend we continue this. I heard, uh, comments made about, uh, too narrow exemption being made to the, to the, uh, onsite hookah consumption. I thought I saw language in the presentation that would address that, but an advocate said that was not adequate, so I'm not, uh, I'm not certain that that needs to be chased down. Um, the broad nature of, uh, new tobacco products, uh, synthetic nicotine, et cetera, uh, we do wanna be sure that we capture that. It would be silly to just have something renamed or repurposed and, uh, and bypass what our intent was here. The, uh, thousand-dollar fine for individuals, we've already removed, moved that previously, independent of this action, so I don't think we would want to reinstate it here. That was something we did, I think, two years ago. Um, so basically we would hold stores liable, but not, not individuals. In particular, we were not interested in holding kids liable. At the time, we had, uh, a ton of support from the Sheriff's Department and the DA and, and some of the same advocates who are here tonight. So that seemed to be a universal thing that we did a couple of years ago. Um, there are a lot of products out there that are used for other things. For example, these flavored wraps. I heard, um, one business owner tonight mentioned, you know, the sale of flavored wraps. Um, those are quite commonly used, uh, to wrap your own marijuana products as a kid. You know, I think you get a cherry-flavored wrapper, something like that, and acquire marijuana from somebody else, and there you go. So basically, it's a product that facilitates marijuana use that's being sold in, in stores, and I don't know if, um, they turn a blind eye to that, or if they know, if they know what's actually being used, um, in that case. Um, I heard a reference, uh, thirty to forty percent of revenues in stores can be these tobacco products. That's a rather remarkable statistic. I don't know if I, I buy that on its face, but I certainly would encourage people to find, find other, um, other products or other things they can serve communities with. Uh, clearly, they've got key, uh, roles in a lot of neighborhoods where we don't have adequate access to food, or people don't have adequate transportation to get to food. There's an opportunity there that hopefully is healthier than tobacco products that are designed, um, to get into the hands of kids and, and recruit them for a lifetime of tobacco use and addiction. So, you know, these projects, these products that are targeting kids, I just don't have much, much sympathy for that. Um, and if, you know, if I had my way, I probably wouldn't allow hookah bars in Rancho Cordova either, or any additional smoke shops, et cetera. Uh, I don't think it's, um, a benefit to our residents. So I, um, generally am a free-market guy, but, uh, the situation is that once, once government enters into these markets and starts toying with things, there is a necessity to do it in a, uh, a smart and informed way, and certainly to block abuses of a free-market system, which I think what we're seeing here, that's certainly the long-term story of big tobacco in the US, you know, creating an addictive product that damages people's health, people's health with the full knowledge of that's what you're doing, making it more addictive with more nicotine to sell more products. That's not, uh, that's not something I think we should be shying away from protecting our residents against. So I would, uh, also recommend we take this back, address some of those detailed concerns, uh, not wait for statewide referendums because we have no guarantee it'll, it'll pass, um, and move forward. I think in context, uh, City of Sacramento's already done this, and County of Sacramento's already done it. So now we're sort of an island of having, ironically, having led this, uh, originally having not done it yet. And that's, uh, that's not a great perspective to be in from my point of view.
Yeah, we have continued to be a leader in, in this in Northern California for a long time. Um, Terry, I see you here now. Uh, Linda, Terry, uh, any other final comments? It sounds like, well, Garrett, I guess you haven't waited on continuing it, but, um, if we have agreement there, I'd like to move, get us on to some of the other more weighty subjects that we-
Yeah, I, I'm in agreement with everything my council members and mayor have said, so. Especially what Governor Davis said, so. If I had my way, I would not let this move forward.
Um, I'm just gonna remind folks that the last item on the agenda tonight, and I'm, I'm letting also, and I wanna, I wanna thank all of the commenters tonight, too. There, I know there were a lot of them. I just wanna remind you that when we go to continue, that the final item tonight is to cancel our May second meeting, so this would be likely the middle of May before we got back to this subject, because, uh, three of us will be in DC, um, with the Metro Chamber, um, doing various things. But, um, Linda, I don't know if you had anything else, or Garrett, I know you've kind of opened up for us, but-
I could say a lot, but, um, I'm perfectly comfortable in continuing it.
Okay. So with that, I'll entertain a motion-
And I will move, I will make that motion.
Second.
To continue it to the, probably, what's that, the sixteenth of May, of May.
Yeah, the middle of May, we'll put it for that. Um, I have a motion by Budge, a second by Gateway. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gateway.
Hi.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Councilmember Sander.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Hi. Is anybody else hearing that echo?
Yes.
Just went away. Oh, okay. All right, so ten point one, I'm sorry, eleven point one has now been continued, and we're moving on to eleven point two, Logistics Center at Rancho Cordova, Major Design Review Project Number PLND one zero two one zero zero one five. And Nick, there you are. Go ahead.
Okay, good evening, good evening, Mayor and Council members. Uh, Nick Sosa, the Associate Planner. Uh, so the project I have for you tonight is the, a major design review for the logistics center at Rancho Cordova. So the applicant is requesting a major design review entitlement to construct a one hundred and fifty-five thousand and forty-square-foot shell industrial building. It will have accessory, an accessory office area, loading dock area, and commercial vehicle parking in the rear. At this time, no tenants are proposed with the current application. So the logistics center will be at the intersection of Bear Hollow Drive and North Mather Boulevard, so it'll be directly adjacent to the California Military Department Headquarters and adjacent to the Matherfield Airport. Um, across the street on Bear Hollow is currently vacant lot, and to the southeast is the existing detention basin for the, the area. So for the next few slides, I'm going to hand it over to the applicant, George Condon, and his team. And George, whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you. One second, get my video on. Great. Yeah, so, um, I'll let you read the slide there that Nick's prepared. You can see the building is going to front North Mather Boulevard, so you've got the parking, and I think you'll eventually see the elevations to the building here. Uh, and then the truck court is gonna be facing- Uh, and then the truck court is going to be facing the new facility that Nick just mentioned in the back. This is probably going to be a one or two tenant building. Um, hard to say at this point, ideally, it's a one tenant building, but but it could be demised um into a two tenant building with offices in in their respective corners.
George, can we comment that it's probably been fifteen years since we saw a spec building?
Yeah, it's um, you know, industrial around the country right now is um is strong. There's a lot of demand for warehouse distribution.
Yeah.
Like manufacturing, e-commerce, and um and Highway fifty is lacking in this product type. You'll find most of this product type either in West Sacramento, where we've developed, and then out at Metro Air Park, and and over at McClellan and Natolmas. But um, one of our clients was looking for space along Highway fifty and about a year and a half ago, and we thought it was a really good idea to um take a look ourselves, and we found this site and another one you're gonna hear about tonight, uh also in Rancho Cudovah.
Is that it of the presentation?
George, would you like me to go to the next slide?
Yeah, that'd be fine. So obviously, you can see, you can see the site there and some views. I don't know, I don't know that I have much else to say about this slide, Nick, if you want to move on.
There's not a lot to look at.
No. Okay, so here are the building elevations. And um, we worked with staff and actually had a neighborhood meeting as well via Zoom um and to come up with these elevations. You'll find that our buildings tend more towards this kind of a clean, contemporary look. Um, our architect, War Malcolm, is one of the larger uh industrial architectural firms in the country. Uh, I think they're very talented. Every design is different. Um, I like what they've done here. I think it's a really good looking product. Um, again, you, like most buildings, you know, we emphasize the architecture, the architectural interest is in the corners where the offices are. I'll go to the next site. Yeah, there you go. Thank you. Okay, and then here. What is that, that first one, Nick? Is that, that looks like that's from the bike path. Okay, so that's from the bike path, looking down towards the truck court. And what's interesting here, I think the landscape architect is on the call, but you can see the newly planted trees, and then what those trees uh will look like after ten years of growth. And um, though, not completely screened, but very well screened. The next slide. Here's a landscaping plan. And I won't speak to the type of plants here. Um, I think it's, this is the second or third round, staff had a few comments on the type of plant, and so I feel like we're in alignment on the landscaping. For the next slide.
And if I can just remind staff and the applicant, we have hours of items still to go, so if we can move this along a little faster, please.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So I can go ahead and speak to this slide. Uh, thank you, George. So as George mentioned, the neighbor, they did have a neighborhood meeting. It was held on November sixteenth at six PM via Zoom. Uh, the notice was sent out to all property owners and tenants within a thousand feet. There were five residents in attendance. Uh, the thousand foot noticing did grasp some of the tenants that were the residents that were a little bit aways. Uh, they did have concerns about outdoor lighting and truck traffic and noise. Um, so the applicant was able to address residents' comments by further explaining their lighting pan- plan and assuring that lighting will be contained to the property. Uh, regarding traffic, they did clarify with the residents that there is no tenant at this time, and that future tenants would be um subject to additional traffic review at whenever they are determined. And also, to address the noise, the applicant did provide a noise study that confirmed that there would not be any conflict with the city's noise ordinance, and it would be compliant within the uh the distance to the residence. So for secret.
So Nick.
Yes.
Nick, just a question. Um, uh, is there a condition that that suggests that truck traffic would use North Mather to Zinfandel as opposed to going up Bear Hollow past the school?
I'm not sure.
I don't think there's a condition to that effect. We certainly want our tenants to go that route, and I think there was some discussion about how the city might sign that or discourage trucks from going that route. But we do not want our our tenants going that route, for sure.
I don't know whether um Public Works puts up one of those T Terminal Truck Route signs or or how that's handled, but um, but yeah, obviously, you would not want to go up Bear Hollow. You would want to, you would want to take North Mather to Zinfandel, north to the freeway, or south, wherever you're going.
That's right, and that's what, that's the, that's the direction the truck drivers are gonna favor, because Zinfandel, as we know, is a is a is a very broad street, it moves quickly, and that that's certainly their preferred direction. But I think we just need to notify them that going left is, I mean, again, it could be a ticketed item, as far as I'm concerned, but I think that's up to Public Works to decide.
Okay. Thanks, Nick.
Okay, so the project was determined to be exempt pursuant to Section one five one eight three, projects consistent with the community plan, general plan, and zoning. Uh, the proposed project is conform, is in conformity with the originally reviewed EIR for the Zinfandel Special Planning Area, so no further sequel review was required. Uh, the recommended motion today is to determine the project exempt per Section one five one eight three and adopt the resolution for the Logistics Center at Rancho Cudovah for their major designer view for project number PLND ten twenty-one zero zero one five. And I am available as questions, as well as the applicant.
So let me first open the public hearing. Uh, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is one hand that is raised in Zoom, and that is Val.
Can you hear me?
We can, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Um, I'm also gonna be commenting on the next project. Uh, my concern is the truck traffic. Um, we were on the Zoom meeting for the uh project that's coming up on uh Baroque and Zinfandel, and my question back then was, what are the hours of the trucking? And they said eight to five, and that isn't happening at the warehouse that's at diagonal to my property. I'm the last property on the uh Stone Creek in the court, and at eleven o'clock at night, I see FedEx trucks coming into the warehouses. So what happened to that time limit?
No, I don't think um we.
Well, wait, excuse me, Ms. Condon, hang on. Is that your, is that your comment, ma'am?
It's my question.
Okay, you have three minutes to complete your entire comment.
Okay.
They have answers after that, but.
Okay, so I ask my other questions, too?
If for this.
Same time.
And you have three minutes, go ahead.
Okay, and when did Zinfandel become an STAA route? That's my other question.
Does that complete your comment?
The only routes, truck routes that are out there are fifty, Mather, and Sunrise. Now I hear you talking about the trucks coming off of North Mather and going northbound on Zinfandel, and that goes right by my house. And that's all the questions and comments I have.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Stacy, if we could, the commenter, please. Okay, um, if the applicant or staff would like to address any of the the questions that we just got from comments, feel free, go ahead.
Um, so during the neighborhood meeting, um, I certainly didn't say that we would commit to limiting truck traffic between eight and eight AM and five PM. Most businesses in Sacramento um do do not operate swing or night shifts, but some do. The area is not restricted in any way, um, as far as truck traffic hours are concerned. Um, I do think there are air quality guidelines that prevent trucks from idling and docks that, of course, is not acceptable, uh, in my opinion, but um, but that is probably, that was probably the gist of the comment, is that your typical user is working, uh, you know, businesses open before eight AM, so six AM to six PM, but most are not doing swing at night. Some are, though, and I think that's what the commenter is experiencing.
Okay. Um, you have all of our public comments. Um, colleagues, any questions for staff, or what would we like to do?
Okay, Donald, so I have to comment as a um, um, an original resident of Stone Creek, and as a person who participated in getting it, um, the Rancho Cudovah Chamber was very involved in getting Stone Creek approved at the Board of Supervisors in two thousand two, and I still have all the original mapping and everything. Um, there's no question that this section of Stone Creek was always intended to be light industrial because of the proximity to the flight line and the overflight zones, and and that comes into play even more in the next um, the next item. Um, I suspect that when the um, uh, when Val mentioned something about STAA routes, perhaps there's a formal name for what I said about the truck traffic. You know, I'm sorry, I didn't know that, but it struck me a bit, but that was my question. How do we ensure that the truck does go North Mather to Zinfandel as opposed to going up Bear Hollow by the um, by the school, which would be an absolute nightmare because of little kids flooding across the street at, you know, basic school hours, um, little kids, parents, grandparents, all sorts of things. So, you know, the best, unfortunately, the the lesser of the evils is to do exactly the what Zinfandel is determined to do, or originally designed to do, and that's take the truck traffic from this light industrial area that does extend all the way south of the homes, from Mather all the way over to um, to the Folsom South Canal, and put it north on Zinfandel to go to the freeway. And that's, that's really the only logical thing you can do with it. Um, I'm sorry, but, you know, that, those maps have been available since day one, at least since two thousand, and um, and and quite frankly, I know that they were in all of the sales offices, with Cheryl Moore said, especially with that, especially with that particular neighborhood, as part of the Tuscany Village where we lived, and all those maps were available. So um, unless my colleagues have further questions, I would move that we find the project, that the um environmental documentation is adequate and appropriate, and that we approve the exemption and um adopt the resolution for major design review.
I do have a question for city staff.
Go ahead, Stan.
Um, the traffic impacts here, I think I heard the applicant say that this application was spawned by a tenant's interest, but we're not being told what the who the tenant is. The setup appears to be purely for warehouse, I'm not sure it's applicable to other uses. So it appears to be a giant warehouse use with lots of trucks, and so that traffic concern is a is a serious one for me, particularly as we contemplate this entire neighborhood and all of light industrial here becoming giant warehouse. Um, that, that's a lot of use that isn't particularly neighborhood friendly, and so I'm worried about the impacts on the neighborhood, and specifically the traffic if that were to happen.
I can address that, Nick, if you'd like. So um, uh, I'm not hiding anything here. The 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 client of ours who expressed interest on the Highway fifty corridor is one you all know, and it's Amazon, they are not interested in either one of these projects. These projects, they, as you, I think, well know, based on a project that you've seen recently, their product is high cube, lots of trucks, lots of truck trailers, lots of parking. These are not e-commerce buildings. These are buildings that will accommodate much less intensive uses. So they're very similar to our buildings in West Sacramento. Um, one, we leased to, a portion of it to Costco. Uh, the other one, we are nearly ready to sign leases with Home Depot. Um, it's, those happen to be the best examples, those are two great companies. Um, but those are the type of uses, type of employers you'll see here. It's not gonna, this is not last mile e-commerce, um, heavy trucks, heavy vans, heavy automobiles.
But it's also not small business innovation or anything that generates sales tax or high paying jobs. Um, none of those are present here either. And my worry is that a fleet of trucks operating with whatever logo they've got on the side, Home Depot or Costco or whatever it might be, is not particularly neighborhood friendly. And these very large monolithic structures are not attractive for the neighbors either. So I'm, I'm worried about property values. This is a valuable neighborhood in Rancho Cudovah, and I don't think this use is going to promote good property values in the neighborhood, and the traffic could be, could be catastrophic, depending on on what the impacts actually are. We don't, we don't know. We're approving a building with no knowledge of what the traffic impact could be. So staff, do we have some other bite at this apple to determine whether we're gonna approve a a specific user with regard to traffic?
Good evening, Councilmember Sander Darcy-Lar with the Planning Department. There is a potential for, as you said, another bite of the apple. At this point, um, this evening is just a designer view. We don't have a use in front of us. Um, the uses within the villages of Zinfandel defaults to the county code that was in place at the time of incorporation. So in this particular zone, there is a wide range of potential uses that could go there permitted by rate. There are uses that would also require additional discretionary review, such as a use permit. Uh, because we don't know what that user is at this time, it's hard to state if for sure you'd have another opportunity um to explore additional impacts such as traffic or noise, which is why. Um, and I believe Albert Stricker may be here that could speak a little bit more in detail to a specific traffic study that was done for this project. I know we've also done some noise analysis as well, I believe. Um, but to answer your question, uh, there is a possibility something could come back before you if the use requires a use permit.
Those are the interpretations of county codes from before our incorporation.
Correct, correct. And just to clarify, I believe the zoning of this parcel within that is BP, so um, business professional, and they can correct me if I'm wrong. So it does allow some lighter industrial uses. Um, you won't see a a heavy industrial user, but um, there is a possibility that a future use would require a use permit.
But also warehousing, would warehousing with uh, with lots of, you know, truck traffic require a use permit?
Um, I believe that is permitted by rate use within the previous code that we're using.
So in that case, colleagues, we're basically, you know, approving that, approving that use of this action tonight. Um, staff, do you think there's more room to shield this, this very large structure from uh, from the neighborhood with landscaping? Have we maximized what's possible in terms of screening with landscaping here?
You could.
Otherwise, you get an industrial look in a, in a neighborhood that's got single family homes, you know, less than a block away.
You could certainly um request some additional landscape screening. Um, as we've talked about before on previous projects, um, you could do a combination of Birmingham walls and additional landscaping. That is an option that you could discuss with the applicant.
We are, we are building a substantial wall to screen the trailer drop area. Nick, the wall is ten feet tall, is that correct? Yeah.
Correct.
you could do a combination of Birmingham walls and additional landscaping. That is an option that you could discuss with the applicant.
We are building a substantial wall to screen the trailer drop area. Nick, the wall is 10 feet tall, is that correct? Yeah. So we are doing our best to screen the truck court. I think, again, staff has reviewed the landscaping with our landscape architect. If there are other types of plants, we're happy to incorporate those in the design. I'm thinking of an Italian cypress, I mean, they've kind of gone out of style. I think they use a lot of water, but they do create quite a visual barrier.
David, was that all your questions?
Yeah, those are my questions. I mean, this is now third or fourth project of this type that we're seeing. We've got another one on the agenda that'll be the fifth. I don't feel like we as a city are prepared to deal with these impacts. I think we're getting caught unawares and are going to be potentially very unhappy about it in five or 10 years.
Other questions for staff? I do have a motion from Linda, we do not have a second. Do we want to move forward, do we want to send this back to staff? They're working it more. I'm kind of a bit...
I would prefer to send it back to staff and have them work on landscape mitigation. Because that's the only tool we've got.
I wouldn't disagree with you. I'm of the opinion though, this is a design review that's before us, let's stick to the design review and enhance the design to what we want. I'm not a big fan of, you know, zoning from the dais and re-zoning from the dais. So, I mean, the projects before us, the developer and staff have worked within the code that they were given. If we need to change the code, we should do that before we ever get an application. But if we're not comfortable moving forward now and we want staff to improve the... I guess, or are we comfortable with giving guidance to staff to enhance the design review?
That would be our preference.
No, we can't zone from the dais. It would solely be, this is allowed, this is the zoning that the county had in place, so that's what we're stuck with. But could we enhance the landscaping so as to mitigate the visual impact of it?
Nick, do you think you have enough direction here to... Would this come back on consent, Cyrus, or would we actually be able to see what was done? Sorry Cyrus, I started asking the question while you were listening, I think. Would we be able to give direction to staff and will this come back on consent so that council can see and enhance design before we have a final vote?
Yeah, I apologize. I think the comment that our planning manager made that this use is permitted by right, unfortunately, there's not a whole lot of discretion.
Yeah, but not to use.
So it's the design, it's mostly on design.
Right, so David has asked for landscaping enhancements to better hide the buildings. Could that be done and we could give direction to staff to do that and bring this back on consent so that the council could see it before its final approval?
We could certainly do that, working with the applicants.
David, are you comfortable with that?
Okay, Donald, I'll withdraw the motion.
I don't think you do, I think we just addressed it.
Well, actually, the motion didn't get a second, so it died.
Well, but we haven't gotten there, there was another question. So I think I'm trying to get to the point of moving this forward and giving you a second.
I don't need a second. All right, so this is the original map.
Linda, we're not talking zoning here, we're just trying to talk about design review.
But, 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 there is a point in zoning here, all right? These parcels were specifically zoned Business Professional. And I knew the county zoning code pretty well at one point when this was adopted. And quite frankly, there is a very large amount of light industrial. And that's what the next project is about. This particular parcel, on both sides of Bear Hollow, where the military headquarters is being built and where the Bureau of Automotive Repair and the originally approved little medical buildings are located, were all Business Professional. And Business Professional had completely different standards, both in landscaping as well as uses. And unless it was MP, Industrial Office Park, then theoretically, the county zoning code didn't really permit industrial warehousing. So that's, I'm sorry, George, but that's one of the things that it seems to me that we need to be looking at.
The zoning is actually very, very clear. What are allowed uses and which uses require a special use permit. And we're comfortable with those directions. I also think that you have a very capable staff. And working with staff, we can get to a landscaping plan that... Somebody said hide the building. I don't know that you want to completely hide the building, there's some good architecture there. But there are areas that you definitely want to disguise as much as possible, which would be the truck court. You know, the office area, the parking lots, these are not areas that you would normally try and hide. And so I just, I don't think we're that far away, if at all, from an acceptable design. And again, I would love to work with staff to get there.
So did, okay, but did I just hear in that that whatever tenants you might put into these Business Professional buildings, theoretically Business Professional buildings might need use permits?
I can't recite the document, but whatever, as Darcy alluded to, whatever the zoning ordinance says, I read it, I'm comfortable with it. The allowed uses are logical and the ones that are not allowed by right that require a condition use permit are fine. We happily come back to describe those uses if they're not allowed by right.
If I could provide some additional clarification. The Villages of Zimfandel Special Planning Area, when it lists the zone, it states which uses are permitted in that zone. So I have it here in front of me. And in the BP zone, and this was pretty characteristic of Villages of Zimfandel, in the BP zone, uses that are listed in the BP and the MP zone are uses that would be permitted or conditionally permitted in the BP zone. It's very common in this one that even uses that are in the MP default to the MP M1 and M2. So that's how the county wrote this specific plan. So you won't just see BP office uses, you'll also see the MP uses in this particular zone. So some of the uses that he's looking at would be permitted, some may require a use permit.
Okay, and I do understand that. The MP zone was specifically created by, well, basically by people working for Peter McEwen and Chris Steele because they wanted to bring industrial uses to this area, but do it in what was supposedly the handsome manner that was being used in Silicon Valley. And so it has Business Professional zoning setbacks like 25-foot landscape strips. But it allowed, that's where we got all these office industrial buildings, where you've got your 25% office and the rest of it is industrial of some sort. But it looks nice because it's got BP landscaping to it. As opposed to the way the county zoning code was at that point in time where you only had need of five feet of landscaping, which never got built anyway. So I get your point, Darcy.
Okay, so we've lost a motion to move this forward.
Well, it depends on how you want to go.
At this point, I'm just looking for if there's anybody that wants to make a motion on what direction we want to go with this. I thought we had been going down the path of an enhanced design and landscaping plan. And the staff, I haven't made a motion, I'm saying that's what I had. But we don't have a motion.
There's finding one in there.
So David, if you want to make a motion, go ahead.
I move we continue this item, ask the applicant to work with staff on landscape enhancements. Work to try to decrease the mass of the building as viewable from surrounding streets. Hide objectionable, what might be the most objectionable areas as Mr. Condon has just identified, you know, truck storage, warehousing, bays, that sort of thing. But not necessarily hide the front, like, architecture of the building as much, particularly if it's not facing residential or other uses like that.
David, just to clarify, you're asking to continue. My suggestion had been to move this forward, it would come back on consent and we would see the design before we had a final vote.
Yeah, I think that's how it could work.
Okay. So I'm just going to restate what I was hoping you were going to move, which was to move the item with the staff guidance that you just gave and bring this item back on consent with the final design.
Right.
Okay.
So we add...
No, you moved it.
No, let's, I'll second it, but let's add some traffic control measures, truck traffic control measures.
That will all come back on consent.
I'll accept that as an amendment.
We have a motion by Sander, a second by Glenn, roll call please.
Councilmember Sander. Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
All right, motion carries. Okay, moving on to 11.3. And again, I would remind the applicant and staff that we just went through this and we have a planning commission and a 24-page, 90-item Measure H docket still to get to tonight. And if we have any hopes of getting through even some of that, we cannot take as long as we just did.
Mayor Terry, staff is going to go ahead and handle this presentation and we'll get through it as quickly as possible.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, June Cows of the Planning Department. Tonight, we're looking at the Stone Creek Industrial Center, major design amendment. The project request is for a major design review amendment for development of four light industrial warehouse with office accessory buildings totaling 602,004 square feet. That includes parking, lighting, and landscaping. This is located within the Villages of Zimfandel Special Planning Area as well. So right there's the site location at the southeast corner of Zimfandel and Baroque Drive. As you can see, it's in the Mather Airport overfly safety zone, approach and departure zone. And this site, of course, was previously graded a while ago and with an existing water tank and bike trail from north and the south along the canal. So some history on this is tentative parcel map that included light industrial zone area. It was divided three parcels into 93 parcels. And in February 2009, there was a tentative parcel map amendment and design review for this project site into 10 parcels with 10 buildings. So in 2017, it expired. And then two years ago, almost three years ago, June 2019, tentative parcel map and major design approved for 603,830 square feet, and that was light industrial buildings. So this is the approved 2019 site plan. And that was with 10 buildings. Existing conditions, this is a look at Baroque Drive, street view. This is in 2019, around that time. And last Friday, went out and took this picture of that same area, 2022. And this is the look at off of Zimfandel Drive at the pedestrian crossing. So here, the proposed site plan is changed down to four light industrial buildings. And the big difference is Baroque driveway has been removed. That is now just an emergency vehicle access driveway. Only the fire and police would have any access to that, they would be putting up a gate. So the driveways will be, let's go to... Here's the proposed phase site plan. And they're going to be putting up some decorative...
Excuse me, June, I'm going to interrupt you for a second. I just was notified that nobody on Zoom can hear us. So we may have some audio issues. Let's try to fix this before we continue the conversation.
IT, I know you're in that back room, if you could pop your head out, now's the time to do it. Everyone, we're taking a short break, use the bathroom.
Yeah, we will take a quick recess and to get the technology fixed.
So Linda, you're there? I don't think we've heard from David yet. But I think Linda's back. Um, I know we're going to lose a council member here after the next item. I want to kind of get going on these. David, are you there? Assuming he's read the staff presentation already. Let's just go ahead and get started and hopefully we don't kill the AV or the audio again. But you go ahead and get started.
All right, thank you. June Cows of the Planning Department. And the project request is a major design review amendment for development of four light industrial warehouse with office accessory buildings totaling 602,004 square feet. That includes parking, lighting, landscaping. And this is also located in the Villages of Zimfandel Special Planning Area. So we can see it's at the southwest, sorry, southeast corner of Baroque Drive and Zimfandel Drive. It's in the Mather Airport Approach and Departure Zone. Project site includes the existing bike trail to the north and to the south and existing water tank. History of the site, 2006 parcel map and was parceled into 93 parcels. In 2009, tentative parcel map and amendment and design review for the project site into 10 parcels with 10 buildings. In 2017, expired. In 2019, tentative parcel map and major design was approved for 603,830 square feet for light industrial. So here's the approved 2019 site plan showing the driveway off of Baroque Drive and two driveways off of Zimfandel Drive. Existing conditions, it shows a street view off of Baroque Drive from around 2019. And last Friday, I took this picture of the same area. Zimfandel Drive, that with that pedestrian crossing. So the proposed site plan includes four buildings and light industrial buildings. And the driveway on Baroque Drive is now emergency vehicle access only. So no truck, no pedestrian, that will be gated off and only for use for emergency vehicles. Three driveways off of Zimfandel Drive. And a proposal to move that pedestrian crossing light to now a new proposed signal light, and that's at that third driveway. Proposed phases, so the first two buildings up along Zimfandel Drive. Off of Zimfendel Drive, where the interior throat to the back of the buildings where the docks are, they're adding a decorative sound walls. This is a revised condition. So this was going to have some trailer parking. At this time, they didn't believe that they were going to have any trailer parking. So the condition was to state if the trailer parking went in, then a wall with landscaping would be put in. But it has been revised that that six-foot wall with vines, similar to that wing wall we just looked at off of Zimfendel Drive, shall be installed from the water tank existing wall to a point parallel with the east end of Building B along Baroque Drive. So that's going to go in regardless of the trailer parking. Looking at the access driveways, again, that's EVA driveway off Baroque, right-in, right-out driveways off of Zimfendel, and a new signal location with a bike and pedestrian crossing. So this pedestrian and bike trail connections just give you overall, there'll be new sidewalk along Zimfendel Drive to complete that loop and also some pedestrian access from the site to the trails and to the sidewalk. That's a one-point-two-mile loop around the site that would be completed. And then, of course, complete, just get more complete as far as Class II bike lanes. Proposed buildings, these also have the landscape trellis along, along the front elevations and side elevations. And of course, the rear elevations where all the dock bays are. Some building perspectives. You can see them off Zimfendel and the bike trail looking to the north. And here is the building and materials. It added a wood plank texture just to give it some more warmth. Here's the site perspective. This is with mature landscaping corner of Zimfendel Drive and Baroque Drive. This is taken from Tintafina Drive looking across Baroque Drive at the project site. And this is a view from the second driveway on Zimfendel Drive where you can see those wing walls and some of the dock bays. View of driveway at the proposed signal, and that's on Zimfendel Drive. They had a neighborhood meeting held on October twenty-six, twenty twenty-one. They discussed the revised site plans, the buildings, access to the site, traffic and noise, and potential tenant uses. The discussion was also included that driveway off of Baroque. Noise study analyzed impacts associated with the potential uses to include traffic and truck traffic. And they also provided the traffic signal feasibility study for that new signal on Zimfendel Drive and relocation of the pedestrian crossing. The project exempt from CEQA Section 15183. It's consistent with the community plan, general plan and zoning. In addition, will comply with Villages of Zimfendel mitigation monitoring plan. And staff recommends city council adopt the resolution stating the project is compliance with CEQA and prove the major design review amendment for Stone Creek Industrial Center, PLD eleven twenty-one dash zero zero twenty, subjects of the findings, projects, plans, and conditions of approval, to include that revised condition as follows, which I stated before, and that's condition number ten. And with that, if you had any questions, and the applicant is hopefully still online.
Yeah, Sean, I'm here.
I believe you. So let's just start. Was there more presentation?
I guess I'd like to make two comments on the site plan to. Yep, can you go to page seven, June? That's fine, right there. Thank you. So a question was asked, is how is this different from the last one that was approved by the city council? The elevations, the elevations are the same. I think the landscaping program is probably similar, although I think it's more densely planted now. The big changes are the fact that we we do not want our cars and trucks on Baroque Drive. We don't want them crossing that bike path. So we've eliminated that connection. As stated, it's it's an emergency vehicle access point only. And then the other big change is the orientation of the buildings. So the buildings, as you can see now, are running east-west instead of north-south. When they're running north-south, they created these funnels of noise into the residential area. This design is much better and will help contain the noise within that interior truck court that you see there. Those are my only comments.
Okay, thank you. With that, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. And we'll go ahead and take public comment on this first.
So we have. We have four speaker cards for those in the council chambers. I'll start there and then I'll go to Zoom. First, we'll start with Paul Carroll. Paul, if you'll come forward. Following Paul will be James Garcia. Following James will be Kate Carroll, and then Greg.
Good evening. My name is Paul Carroll. I live about a thousand feet from the property. And so the concerns that that Councilman Sanders raised about the previous project is something that I feel very deeply. I agree with Linda Budge that when we bought the property, we were notified that it is light industrial. We've been prepared for light industrial. What we haven't been prepared for is a forty-eight-foot building. The, if you look at the elevations on the drawings, the front of the buildings are forty-eight feet, which is about a three and a half or a four-story building. Most of the road that I live, the street that I live on, of which we will look down the street and see these buildings, are primarily one-story houses. So the contrast between a one-story house and a four-story warehouse is quite striking. I I look particularly at the at the design, major design review recommendation, and I look at part B, and it says, "The proposed architecture will enhance the character of the neighborhood." And I find it insulting that you would believe that you would drive into our neighborhood and believe that a forty-eight-foot warehouse is going to enhance the neighborhood. I recognize it's zone light, light industrial. It's the scale that just really concerns me. Replacing forty acres of grassland with a bike trail up around the top ridge with four warehouses, forty-eight feet high, total of six hundred thousand square feet, with parking for eighteen semis in the back, seems to me not an enhancement of the neighborhood. Second point I would make is it goes on and see in the finding, and it says, "The architecture, including the character and scale, is compatible with the character of existing buildings on adjoining and nearby properties." I'm a thousand feet away. Am I a nearby property? If so, forty-eight feet versus the height of my house seems to be not of the same scale. The final point that I would raise in the findings is that the proposed project will not create conflicts with vehicular bicycle or pedestrian transportation modes of circulation. May not change the circulation, but staff's report says that there'll be three thousand trips a day out of this facility. And I'm wondering what that does to the flow down Zimfendel. They also note that this is a mix of heavy trucks and pedestrian traffic or passenger traffic, but they don't mention what the mix is. Is it ten percent cars and ninety percent trucks? And they talk about heavy trucks. Are heavy trucks and semi eighteen-wheelers the same thing?
Please wrap up your comments.
That's that's all that I have to say.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Uh, council members, I'm James Garcia. I actually live with my back to this proposed product. I spoke once before about it and helped to get that change to go ahead and get the traffic off of Baroque. We're not opposed to it, but we are concerned about the twenty-four-seven activity of light industrial right behind our house. I have a two-story house. I have a sound wall, but that doesn't affect my upstairs. I'm going to be blinded by light. I'm going to be blinded by noise. The fact that you have four buildings doesn't really help us out. You have in phases, but you're not actually addressing the fact that you have that sound corridor in the center, but you have two separate buildings that are going to go ahead and be split, and you're going to funnel it right into my door. That's not appropriate. Fact that you've notified people, you had twelve people on the last call, my neighbors, myself, we never got the notification of that public meeting to address this. Many of them are on the Zoom right now. We also want to address the fact that traffic control, like you said before, there's eight lights the moment you get off the freeway at Zimfendel. That's on White Rock Road all the way up to Baroque. Now you're going to add in another lane and change that. That's nine lights. Try getting semi trucks, kids to school, that now have to cross over Zimfendel. You're having another light industrial over there. That's not proper planning. Um, let's see, one other lovely little thing. The aesthetics, like you said, it's horrible. Why, why do you want to have a red building there? Get better with color. Do something else with it. There's already enough accidents there. It's just not what you really want for proper planning. We were lied to by Elliot. I'll admit that. I didn't see the proper zone that Linda Budge talked about. We were told it was wetlands back there. Who wants to look at a building? We didn't really realize it. We didn't do our due diligence, but now you're also going to ruin ours by having forty-eight-foot square warehouse. It's just not right. Thank you.
The next speaker is Kate Carroll. Following Kate will be Greg.
Thank you, council members, and Mayor Terry. I'm here. I've lived in Stone Creek since two thousand and six. My husband spoke just a few minutes ago. And I'm really here to share my concerns about the proposed project. Number one, the lack of public information. And the gentleman before me indicated that. There were, the only way we found out about this was a month ago by a neighbor who had gotten word of the project because they lived within five hundred feet of the project. That is unacceptable. People who live in that area are all going to be affected. Why didn't more people know about it? I had to tell neighbors this actually today, neighbors who showed up here today, who did not know that it was happening. I think that's unacceptable. And the timing and the process of this project is somewhat suspect. I know it started in twenty nineteen. It seemed that COVID might have given it a good impetus to move forward without a lot of public knowledge, and that concerns me. And lastly, as Paul mentioned, the scale, the added traffic and the scale of the of the buildings that you're recommending or being recommended. I look out my front door, down my driveway, and towards Baroque, and all I will see is a big, huge, forty-eight-foot-tall building. I'm opposed to this. Thank you.
Greg, Mylenberg.
Thank you for letting me talk tonight. Good evening and happy Easter to Mayor Terry and fellow council members. I'm Greg Mylenberg. My wife and I live on thirty-five sixty-five to being away there in Stone Creek. We were not notified of this logistics hub, and then same as other folks. So I'll just move on to my other points. The height of a, dimensions of a eighteen-wheeled tractor-trailer is standard is thirteen point six feet. I think somebody said we're going to do a six-foot wall. That really covers it, doesn't it? Not. The other thing is, we're talking about this in isolation, and we should be talking about the whole of the industrial area and the amount of traffic and trucks that are going to be coming in and out of this area. We were talking earlier, Linda was, Councilwoman Linda was talking about how the traffic next to the schools, and we're talking about even the kids going across the street into the soccer park area next to our, where we live. The, I also see the snarling of eighteen-wheeler traffic going up and down Zimfendel. There wasn't zone for that. Again, also, the industrial, light industrial was zoned for one story, not for forty-eight-foot tall. I also did a quick search on LoopNet. If you're familiar with that, that's commercial buildings. I saw, I found ten different vacant office industrial flex properties. By the way, it's my job that I do during my day job is I go and I look for these kind of things. There's seventy-six thousand square feet on Kilgore Road. I can go down the list. Why do we have to put, why don't we use the infrastructure we have already instead of let it decay and go to a waste? Why don't we reuse that? Why don't we regenerate that? Why don't we give some tax incentives for people to go and and maximize those properties instead of trying to create something elsewhere? There's other locations, not just the ones that I've found in LoopNet, but there's other property that's further out, down a little bit further, that's not in the residential area. So we don't have a mixture of industrial and residential. That's, we don't want to be Power Inn Road. We like to be Rancho Cordova, Stone Creek. Thank you very much.
Mayor Terry, I'm now going to go to Zoom. So I'm going to start with Eric. Eric, I'm going to go ahead and unmute you. You'll have up to three minutes to speak.
And just to review, we have hands up from, I'll give another second here. So Eric, then Val, then Sarah, then Jennifer. Those are going to be our commentators in June.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to make some comments here. I also was not informed of the October twenty twenty-one meeting, and so I'm unhappy and curious about how that happened. But this particular meeting, I want to state several comments and make a few questions, present a few questions. First of all, I think this design is significantly better than the previous one. The addition of the stoplight and the change of the driveway off of Baroque are both important improvements. However, I'm not clear whether the other comments that had been previously transmitted to council were incorporated into this latest design revision, and that includes particularly lights along the Baroque side of the property. My home is on Listan Way, which is right across the street from this development. And with, as the owner of a two-story home, I just would not be very happy to have bright lights shining into my bedroom all night long from all the security lights in the building. I know there's got to be technology that allows sufficient security for onsite protection while hiding that bright lights from neighbors. So if not included, I encourage the builder to incorporate that into their final design. Secondly, I do, I am encouraged by the fact that traffic has been diverted from Baroque Drive, but I'm also concerned, as others are, about the noise factor of many semi trucks coming in and out of the that area. In particular, I admit the notice that there are three thousand trips per day. If that is correct, and that's a significant number, my quote day job is as an air quality professional, and I look out the back window, and I know that the dominant wind direction is out of the southwest. And so guess where all the houses are? Downwind of those, all of those, both the previous and this current property into a large amount of residential areas. Diesel particulate matter, which comes from these diesel trucks, is a toxic air contaminant in the state of California. And even though the concentrations are declining over time, many municipalities are recognizing the high level of cancer burden that results from this. In particular, the South Coast Air Quality Management District has a new set of regulations to address the warehouse impact to residential areas and how that exacerbates current risk to the communities. So for those reasons, I would be opposed to this. I'd at least scale it down. The the height factor is well noted by others. And the visual and visual and noise, but the air quality as my chosen route and path in life is of particular concern to me. And there are many children in the area, and as anybody who's involved in health issues would know, the impact to for pollutants is of particular concern. would know, the impact to, for pollutants is of particular concern to sensitive populations, the elderly and the young.
Please wrap up your comments.
And in Godwood area. So thank you for your attention.
The next speaker is Val.
Hi, I'm back again. Okay, so back to my comment about the STA routes. I did work for Caltrans for 37 years and know the traffic route, the truck routes. And again, Zinfandel is not a truck route. What is allowing those trucks to go down Zinfandel? Secondly, the trucks from Sunrise, which is a truck route, are deviating over to Zinfandel via Douglas or via Baroque because they can't get through on Sunrise. I've also seen them come through International and cut over onto Zinfandel to get up to Douglas. So when did Zinfandel become a truck route? The warehouse, we talked about noise, the warehouse they put up has now funneled all the noises from the trucks and the traffic into the intersection of Zinfandel and Baroque and North Mather, which is very loud in my part of the neighborhood. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Sarah.
Evening, this is Sarah. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead, you know, three minutes.
Really understanding what we are.
Sarah, I'm having trouble, I don't know if you're using a microphone or something, but it's very muffled.
Okay, can you hear me now?
It's a little better.
A little better? Okay, I just brought it closer. I'm in a rainstorm. I'm out here at Bodega Bay, and it's just pouring. So I want to thank David for understanding what we are going through in this neighborhood and being sympathetic to the noise and especially to our property values. I know light industrial was a design in the first place. However, what these warehouses are looking like are certainly not light industrial. And so I appreciate you bringing that point forward, David, about our property values. I have a question on the design, and hopefully this can be answered by the planners. The two entrances that are right in, right out are, how would trucks coming from 50 get into those driveways? If someone could take the time to answer that for me, I'd appreciate it because there's an island there, and I'm not sure how they would enter coming from 50. And that's all I have for comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
We can, go ahead.
Okay. We do have a two-story house that does back up to that property, and the noise that we already hear from the other light industrial buildings that was put in is just astronomical. The amount of accidents that I hear weekly on Zinfandel already going towards Douglas is a lot, adding more big rigs coming up and down Zinfandel. I don't think Zinfandel is ever zoned properly to have trucks of that size and magnitude, and I'm just worried about what kind of people it will bring into our neighborhood. We have teens and small kids in our neighborhood. A lot of our teens go out using the bike trails and stuff around there. Are you going to be providing security? You know, is there going to be anybody watching out for kids that use that bike trail and stuff? You know, I don't want to have this where all of a sudden I can't have my teens go out and go for a run like they used to, knowing that they were in a safe neighborhood. Now we all of a sudden have who knows who coming into this neighborhood with truckers and other people that may just be, you know, using that as a parking lot to loiter in or bring trash and other stuff into the neighborhood. And the design, yeah, I look out at greenlands right now, weeds, if you want to call them, but it's a beautiful sight to look out to every morning. And now having to look at a 48-foot building, it's not an aesthetically pleasing look for our neighborhood. I would just, you know, if this is going to go in and this is going to happen, I would ask the designers to go back and relook at that and address that to make it more fitting into the neighborhood and really look at the noise level. The way that you have it sectioned off right now, there is a split between the buildings, and that noise is going to echo down right into my home and my backyard. And I'm also concerned about, you know, the pollution that it's going to bring with diesel trucks and everything coming into my neighborhood. We're an active family. We're an active court. We are always outside, and just what that is going to bring pollution-wise and noise level is just not acceptable as families for around here. So I'd really, you know, if this is going to go in, it's going to go in, but I would encourage you to do a little bit more research, do some more better design, and really think about the families and stuff that are in this neighborhood. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, we've dispensed with public comment. Questions for staff? Directions?
I do have a couple of technical questions. Probably for Public Works. Do we still have Albert?
I'm just going to remind colleagues and staff, we still have planning permission.
Yes, we know. Thank you. Do we still have Albert?
Yeah, he's coming up right now.
Yes, we do.
Come on, Albert.
So Albert, we're all really aware that, that when we were able to extend Zinfandel down to, south to the county line at the boundary at Mather, it transitions from three lanes at Bear Hollow, down to, well, six lanes at Bear Hollow, down to four lanes, down to two lanes at North Mather, and then two wide lanes. And then it's two lanes from the county line all the way to Douglas. So what parts of that are being remodeled to three, to six lanes?
Good evening, Mayor Terry and members of the council, and thank you for the question. Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department. That entire stretch is scheduled at full buildout to be six lanes all the way down to Douglas Road.
Okay, but how does full buildout relate to building, to constructing this project? Because obviously, on the east side, when the beauty parlor warehouse went in, they, obviously, they used the ultimate right-of-way, but there was no restriping of the road.
It's currently striped as four lanes, as you said, south of about Spoto, I think, right around there, transitions to four lanes south of there. The width is there for a full six lanes. However, it's only striped for four lanes because that's all of the, all the capacity that's needed at this time. But at such times, the capacity.
Okay. So, so currently we have a pedestrian, currently we have a signal turning into the Public Safety Training Center, and that actually does work. I discovered the other day from when we went to the, to the press conference that Assembly Member Cooley called. But, but then we have a pedestrian activated signal at the bike lane, right? But then somebody said something about that signal was going to be relocated. How can you relocate it when you've got bike trail here and bike trail here, and you need to go that way?
This project proposes to move the signal just to the north, and so then the trail would veer to the north to use the same signal to cross as is being proposed for access to this facility.
Okay, so, and I remember from the revised site plan that there is a north driveway there, but would it be designed so that pedestrians and bicyclists could activate it even though there were no, there was no truck or automobile traffic?
That's right. This is, the proposed pedestrian crossing would be relocated to the southernmost driveway of the project on Zinfandel, and there would be pedestrian activation at that location.
As well as automobile?
That's correct.
Okay. So somebody asked a really important question. Might have been Val. Somebody asked a really important question about how do trucks that are southbound on Zinfandel get into the project?
There would be a southbound turnpocket that would allow full movement at that southern So this would be a full operating T-intersection essentially at the southern driveway, controlled by a traffic signal. So the vehicles would have a turnpocket there, southbound, and they would be able to turn left into the driveway.
Okay. So the T-intersection would be people coming out of the project and teeing into Zinfandel?
That's correct. Either coming out or going in.
Thank you. Those are my Public Works questions. But I do have one for George. And George, I know you're still on the line. And I'm sorry, I thought the, the architecture for your previous project was head and shoulders above this one.
That's fine. This, we, we adopted the elevations that were already approved. We're happy to adjust the color scheme to be more in line with the one I showed you initially, which is more in line with the Dermody color palette. So happy to go in that direction.
We are blessed with almost 20 years now of mature landscaping on Baroque.
Yes.
That's really an asset. There's no question about it. But it seems like the buildings could be a little more contemporary with the neighborhood, as opposed to what might have been approved or might have been considered and approved in 2019, or 2009, or 2007.
Again, we're, the design you saw on that Bear Hollow project is consistent with what we do around the country, so we're happy to move in that direction.
I'm mindful that it's blue. We don't necessarily have a lot of blue around here, but, but I suspect people would enjoy seeing something that seems a little more in keeping with their, with their own houses.
Yeah. Jeff, our architect's on the phone right now. He and I will start working on that tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you. And actually, I think what struck me so much was you said something about the, about the corners, the office corners being the, trying to be the focal point of the buildings, and yet most of the elevations we saw were the very long linear elevations with just big brown or red things in the middle. And that didn't really seem to be in keeping with what you showed us for the first project.
Yeah, I think the, what we're trying to show, I think, in the slide that you saw, are the prevalent, the elevations you're going to see most frequently. Not too many people are going to be driving along Zinfandel past these buildings. We're happy to show those corners for sure, but I think most people are going to be viewing these buildings from Baroque, and so that's why you saw those elevations.
Well, you know what's interesting? The people who talked about traffic patterns, there is no question that there is a significant number of people who use Douglas and Zinfandel and Baroque to get to work as opposed to going up Sunrise or going all the way up Zinfandel. It's really quite remarkable, but as I'm sure the neighbors can attest, if you stood out there on that corner, any morning at 7:30, you would see a significant traffic pattern going north on Zinfandel and east on Baroque. So you're going to see a lot of that corner.
Yeah, I get that. And again, you know, the fact that we've eliminated the access to Baroque, it's written up in the traffic, in the trip generation report that's attached to staff's report. It shifts a considerable amount of traffic that would have been on Baroque off to Zinfandel to the signal that Albert was just describing to get into the park.
And that's a really good idea. And I know that there's, I know that people are feeling skeptical, but there's no question that a significant amount of conversation four years ago now, I guess, was devoted to the fact that when those buildings were located north-south, there could have easily have been a significant amount of traffic from the interior industrial sides of the buildings that focused on the neighborhood. Having the building as linear like this really reduces that. It keeps it on the, on the south side of those buildings away from the neighborhoods. And correct me if I'm wrong, but the trailer parking was a leftover from when somebody was proposing mini storage there.
Yeah, the, I think that's correct. The.
Staff might remember.
As far as where the, where the proposed trailer parking would be on phase two?
No. June, you remember when this was, at some point, this was supposed to be mini storage? And it seems to me that the trailer parking was left over for people who wanted to store vehicles there.
Oh, that was previous, previous to me.
Okay, well, like I said, this is like the fifth time we've seen this. Okay, George, thank you. Thank you, Jeff.
Any other questions for staff?
I have some questions. The, the building height referenced by a neighbor, 48 feet. Staff and you, or can the architect verify that, that that's accurate? It's not obvious on the, on the plans in front of me.
Yeah, actually, the overall height, as far as the main building height, that was actually brought down to 42 feet. The architectural parapets that are in that red on the corner, that was, they also brought that down to 46 feet.
Okay, so it's by and large, 48's not, not that far off. Yeah, I heard the comment, we don't want to be Power Inn Road, and that was, that's a powerful commentary in my point of view. We need Power Inn Road places, but I don't know that Stone Creek is where we need a Power Inn like place. There was a, there's a six-foot wall to hide trucks. Someone commented on that. I made a note about it before. Big rigs are 13 feet, 6 inches. If that's what is designed to be stored there, it doesn't appear a six-foot wall does much, as you'll see right over it, rows and rows of trailers being stored there.
Yeah, I think we were, and we were going to be doing also the landscape. Yeah, I think we were the, and we were going to be doing also the landscaping, um, behind that wall, and the wall would just have the vines, but, you know, if we, um, that's up to the applicant as far as increasing the height?
Well, I think, yeah, I think at a certain point, these walls, I mean, you're not going to do a fifteen-foot-high wall. I don't think anybody would be happy with that. I, I noticed that our landscape architect's on the phone, and so, um, Jeff, I threw out that idea of Italian cypresses, um, maybe along this wall. Is that, is that a bad idea? Or a good idea, or do you have a better one?
Yeah, no, I, I'm not sure that Italian cypress is the right plant, but we have heavily planted this entire north side of this project, including the area down by the water tank. So, um, that is a, a primary concern to us is, is what is that view as you look from north to south towards the project? And yes, I can assure you, we've, we've got that area heavily planted.
So it's gotta be evergreen, it's gotta be in depths. Um, we've seen so many projects that make that claim. You know, oh, we're going to screen it. And then you just see tons of, tons of junk that the landscaping doesn't, doesn't actually cover.
We are blessed with an extremely wide landscape area on this particular project in the north.
You do have an extremely wide area. So, I mean, the hope would be that someone from Baroque looking south towards this would say, uh, "That looks like a forest." You know, "Maybe I see some cars or building frontage, but I can't tell what it is." Because there's so much green material, it's just, it looks like there's a forest there.
Yeah, in, in many areas, there's, there's between six and ten trees just between our north property line and the first row of parking stalls. And then we have, you know, trees in the parking lot, and we have trees up against the building as well. So there's a significant amount of landscaping between the projects and the neighbors to the north.
And what, what percent of that would you say is evergreen as opposed to deciduous?
Probably sixty to seventy in that, in that location.
Is it evergreen?
Yeah.
Yeah, so even in the winter, you get multiple levels of, uh, of hiding of what's behind it. And, uh, how many years until you get coverage? Is that a five-year prospect, a ten-year prospect?
That's probably between five and, five and eight years. The trees will be mature at fifteen.
Okay.
When I say mature, that's sixty to eighty feet tall.
Okay, that was my next question. Um, because if you've got a forty-two-foot-high building you're trying to hide, obviously you need some substantial trees there. You're not going to see those in a couple of years. Steph, this, uh, three thousand per day, um, car impact, that comes out to, depending on how you want to do the math, four times a minute or six times a minute a vehicle, something like that. And of course, some of them probably go, most of them probably go north, some of them probably go south. There's eight lights, someone counted from Baroque to, to Highway fifty. I assume, I mean, that number sounds like a lot, but I assume when you throw it into the traffic milieu that's already out on Zinfandel, four to six more vehicles per minute, what percent increase is that in the total throughput of, uh, of Zinfandel?
Good evening. I don't have the exact percent increase. However, the traffic engineer for the project did analyze the change in level of service with and without the project. And there is not a significant change in the level of service on the roadway based on this addition. Zinfandel Drive has a proposed six-lane, a future six-lane road, has quite a bit of capacity, um, available.
Yeah, a car every fifteen minutes for eight hours a day, or a truck, I'm sorry, every fifteen seconds. That's how that would work out. Definitely that's an impact, but given the overall volume of traffic, it may be not that significant. But I think it would be if it was truck, you know, if these are like a thousand trucks a day or two thousand trucks a day. Uh, particularly if they're large trucks. So is, is there a restriction? I mean, we heard about SCA routes. But I think it has to be registered with the state, and that's what large trucks are limited to. Would, would large, like, over-the-road, seventy-foot-long trucks be allowed, uh, to deliver to this location?
STA is the Surface Transportation Assistance Act of nineteen, nineteen eighty-two is what's that, what that's referring to. And Zinfandel Drive is not a STA, is not a STA route. However, that does not preclude the traveling of, of tractor-trailers on there that are California legal. It's only extralegal trucks that are confined to STA routes. And there are various, um, particular definitions of, uh, what a STA truck is. But the most basic definition, one of them is the length of the truck, which is over sixty-five feet long, nose to tail. That is an extralegal truck. Under sixty-five feet, although there's some specifics to this and some variations, in general, under sixty-five feet is a California legal truck, which may travel on regular arterials, which are not defined STA routes. One of the, one of the differences, although not always, um, but commonly, the difference between the California legal and the extralegal, which are required to go on STA routes, is whether or not they have the larger sleeper cab on the tractor in front. Tends to lengthen the overall, uh, length of the truck and require it to be on a STA route, but not always.
Right. I appreciate the change from a Baroque orientation or an inadvertent Baroque orientation to more of a Zinfandel orientation. And I think those little walls, uh, screening off the truck area there are good as, as a start. I'm not, I don't know if they have, if we've sort of maximized that capacity to screen, um, what could be a row of, gosh, I don't know, forty or sixty trucks or something lined up, uh, at these, at these very large warehouse facilities. Is, is there a way to densify the planting or raise the wall or narrow the opening further to restrict, to restrict what that might look like from Zinfandel? Because we do obviously get a lot of traffic on Zinfandel. And presenting ourselves as a, as a truck-oriented place is not sort of the brand we're looking for.
Let us, uh, let Jeff and, and Jeff and myself take a look at that when we start the redesign on the elevations. And we'll, we'll give some thought to the height of those panels and then the landscaping. Yeah, it's got to be a combination of landscaping and, and walls, because too many walls is not aesthetically pleasing.
Right.
So, um, but let's look at that combination and come back to you with a, a new, um, design to, to consider.
You can vine over walls, obviously. That's one way to, to wall, but it looks like vine. That's one trick. I mean, what I would, what I would like, really like, is some sort of a, a double-wall operation, or the truck has to go in between, but if you've got very large trucks, that's going to limit, you know, how much of that is actually possible.
Yeah, we have to be very careful about truck movements in order to avoid accidents.
Right. Finally, and I guess this is a question for planning staff. What are the limits of our design review here? I mean, if, for example, we said forty-two feet is just simply too high, uh, twenty-two feet is fine. Is that within our design purview?
In terms of the findings, excuse me, yes, it is. Um, you have specific findings. You have to meet the talk about size and scale and compatibility. So, um, certainly, anything that is design-related is within your purview. So height, landscaping, design.
David, um, we are blessed with a variety of, of what they used to call flex space, up and down Kilgore, sort of between Prospect Park and Sunrise. And it's all basically lower. The standard height of a fast-food restaurant is about twenty-two feet. And, um, and when you start talking about bringing buildings down to that kind of height, then you're really dictating the uses. And so, um, if you want, if, if the buildings, if these buildings are intended for something like high pile storage, then it needs to be more in the elevation of Lowe's and Home Depot.
Yeah, I think, I think that's well said. It's, um, you do have a lot of office product, you have a lot of flex product in Metro Cordova, um, and you have a lot of, um, very functionally obsolete industrial product along Sunrise. It's, uh, too small and the clear heights are too low. And today's users, um, are looking for that, we call it, uh, a clear height inside the building. But it's a thirty-six-foot clear height inside the building. And that's what necessitates these taller panels. Again, and we've done it with great success in West Sacramento and attracted, um, as I said earlier, um, Costco and, uh, Home Depot. These are the type of companies we want, and I, I would suggest they're the type of employers you want in your community. And they require what we call Class A buildings. Anything lower than thirty-six feet is considered a Class B building. And that's, it's, it's not a good asset, in my opinion, for you to have in your community.
So David, were you on our, our tour with, um, Tri-Tool?
Uh, yes.
Okay, Tri-Tool looks like a lower building, because number one, it's built of that beautiful red brick. But if you remember being on the inside in their industrial spaces, then it was really a high, high pile storage building. And they had a huge volume of workspace in which to, uh, construct and, and, um, and so, it really, it really does impact whatever the ultimate uses for these buildings when you start talking about chopping the building in half.
Well, is, is the height just about warehousing? Is, is that why you need thirty-six feet clear?
No, it's not just, uh, so we are, um, we're doing two buildings in Hayward right now for Rivian, the electric truck manufacturer. And a portion of their manufacturing operation requires, in fact, more than thirty-six foot clear, um, because the manufacturing equipment itself is, is, is tall. And so manufacturers, uh, warehouses, they, they all have a, can have a use for that extra clear height. And so that's why it's important to have it. Sometimes you'll get a user who won't, who won't need it, right? But that's not, those are more high-throughput companies. And that's, I just don't see that type of company being in this area. That type of company wants to, always wants to be closer to the freeway. You know, the project that Amazon was considering, um, at the Panatoni project off of White Rock. Maybe it's a little bit closer to the freeway, but that, that's, those are the type of locations where you see heavy truck traffic. Or the North, the North Port, North Point project that's off of Hazel, right next to the freeway. Those are, you're going to see heavy warehousing uses in, in that type of location because of its proximity to the freeway.
Yeah, and those uses I, I just don't see as an asset to our community. You know, if it's a, if it's a heavy-duty warehouse use, then that's not a, a very high-end job. It's a lot of, a lot of truck traffic. There's no innovation, there's no sales tax. Warehouse jobs and warehouse uses are just not particularly beneficial to us.
Sure, I'm saying a lot of people.
Yeah, I'd have to disagree with you. I mean, my nephew works in a warehouse. Um, he's twenty-two years old. It's a great job. He's surrounded by a lot of people his age, single mothers. I mean, I, I, I just, I have a completely different opinion about the quality of jobs in, in these buildings than you've just expressed. And it's important to me to make that point, so.
David, unfortunately, I've experienced the same thing that, um, that George is talking about.
Yeah, it's just, you know, Rancho Cordova's typecast. Uh, high-end job, oh, that needs to be somewhere else. Low-end job, Rancho Cordova. This is, this is my problem.
Yeah, I don't know if I would agree with that. I mean, we haven't, we, we had a bribe in Office Park, but I would tell you that a lot of what you would consider high-end jobs, VSP and, and other things, probably there's a lot of those jobs can be done remotely. I mean, I have an office in Roseville that I rarely see. So, I mean, e- even the, the high-end jobs that you're talking about can mostly be done remotely in the last two years and have been. So e- even relying on that is, I mean, if, if anything, our industrial spaces are one place that people still had to go, they had to go to work, so they may still buy lunch in town. Because, you know, there's, there's not another way to, to fill a truck and have somebody go there and operate a forklift. But I, I get your point in, in the end of what you're saying. Uh, you know, if, if, i- if we have some sort of control over the height, I think that's what we're hearing from, from the neighbors. I think I've heard you, uh, throw out thirty-two feet as a minimum to keep it Class A. I don't know if there's any way between those two levels. I think we're at forty-two right now. But I would think, it's, from the, the conversation that I'm hearing right now, I'm barely weighing in here, we've heard from two of, two of the council members. We do have two others. Um, but I'm hearing two council members that want some significant design changes before they're willing to move forward. I, I'm willing to probably agree with them. And it's more significant than the last one. But Garrett, Siri, would you like to weigh in?
Yeah. So, first of all, all the citizens that are here, I'm sorry that you guys got property this right next to Light Industrial. I feel bad because you guys thought it was going to be really cool, um, grass or just a, I don't know how someone said wetlands. I mean, that's just dang it. It's kind of like me expecting a school to be built in Anatolia, and my kid's getting ready to graduate from high school. So, you know, I feel you, those wily salespeople. I just think we need to be very careful, whatever we put in this community, that it doesn't turn into the blight that we are all concerned about. And, um, I feel that, that if, i- i- I totally can get with David. David's very concerned. Warehouse space is totally needed. Um, Light Industrial's totally needed. It was, we were thinking it was going to be a business complex, but now it seems that we're going to have warehouses popping up all. So I just think we need to take a chance and see what this actually is supposed to look like, because right now I hear that it's going to go back to the drawing board and come back with something that hopefully my citizens are more appreciative of and not like, "This is horrifying, and you've wrecked the, that whole Zinfandel." Because that's where I'd take my kids to go play soccer. You know, and I don't, and, and, hold on, hold on, I'm talking. And so I think what we need to do now is, a- and you were, and George, you were agreeing, this is, is take it back to the drawing board. You've heard lots of concerns now. And, um, and talk about how are we going to make this so it's not a blight on our city, but a benefit to our city? Because we all know we want the jobs. For God's sakes, Rancho Cordova can always use more jobs to be able to help out our community. But I don't want to wreck a brand, I don't want to make it so citizens are feeling like, because I know half of them are like, figuring out how they're going to move out of my city. And, uh, yeah, I see all you guys, I, I already know, your next step is fulsome. Um, but we want to keep you here. Because if not, we'll, you know, we want to, we want to see if we can do that. So I'm glad you guys are willing to take the chance to kind of make it look, you know, that's why I'm hoping for this amazing planning commission, that steps in soon to help us out with this. Because it's hard, because I feel you've done a lot of work, and then you come to here, and we're like, "We don't want it." And that's just not fair, to your point. So, um, I think that if you moved, um, if you worked with staff to really come back with a, a design that actually fits in, and let's not say things like it's going to blend in with the community, because it's not. But, um, we know that this is something that, that you have all the right in the world, and we can't block you on. But we want you to see what the design can look like to really benefit my citizens. So that's kind of where my head is. And I think I agree with Linda and David that it's just, let's take it back to the drawing board and involve my planner, Linda, on making it look right. Maybe it could look like a Taco Bell of some sort, or a, sorry, that was mean, I apologize, I was. But, um, if you want to get it approved tonight, I need nothing but palm trees. So if you-
Oh, Garrett.
What?
All right, all right.
I apologize. Go ahead.
Any comments?
Yeah, I, I, I think my colleagues have covered it all. I don't have anything in view to add to this. So I agree with my colleagues on everything that, um, they said so far. So back to the drawing board. And, and by the way, I don't believe it's a blight, um, but I do believe it is a benefit, but we just have to make it agreeable with all our citizens.
So do we have a motion of some sort?
I will move that we continue this to May the sixteenth.
We're moving a lot of things to May the sixteenth. I would just remind you, we also have a budget passed before you move.
Well, that's our next meeting.
Right. And we're going to have a lot of things at our next meeting, including a budget and a measure R and-
So we'll leave it up to the applicant to decide if it needs to be continued beyond that.
Mayor Terry, if I may, I, I'm not sure that continuing to May sixteenth is going to provide enough time for the applicant to go back to the drawing board and redesign. I would suggest we just continue off calendar. I would suggest we just continue off calendar.
So then would you be, would you be?
Continue to a date uncertain, if that's okay with George.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just, I wanna provide some clarity. I mean, what, what I'm thinking.
Briefly?
Sure, briefly. What I'm taking away from this is, is, um, well, what I'll work with Darcy on is a design that looks more like the Bear Hollow design. We'll investigate landscaping. I, I would, I would, I'd like to advocate for the thirty-six foot clear and the taller panels because you're gonna get better employers and we're gonna get better tenants and you're gonna get better jobs. And so, you know, going lower is not something that, um, I'm, I'm gonna undertake.
But, but currently you're at forty-two, correct?
Yes.
But you're saying you're open to thirty-six. I appreciate it.
No, that's not what we're saying. But let's work with Darcy.
Say that, say that again.
The thirty-six foot isn't an interior measurement. It's not the exterior. So a thirty-six foot clear on the interior translates to the forty-two foot tall panel.
So that's your minimum. Okay, I got you. Okay. Okay. All right. So we have a motion to continue to a date uncertain.
Second. Second.
Motion by Bud, second by Gatewood. Roll call please.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Hi.
Councilmember Pulipati.
Yes.
Councilmember Sander.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Hi. All right, item is continued. Okay, we're moving on to regular calendar items. Our first regular calendar item is twelve point one, planning commission member nomination and selection. So council, so the first thing we need to do, I believe, um, is Garrett, you need to pick an alternative to your last point D, and then we would hopefully adopt the five. And then we need to do some sort of forced rank decision on the remaining candidates. So Garrett, are you prepared to make a nomination?
I am. And do you want me to give my other two as well at the same time?
Well, let's, let's take it one at a time. So just, if you wanna do your nomination first.
Okay.
Then everybody has at least a little bit of time to decide who's not left in the pool to decide who.
Got it. Totally understand. Uh, I'd like to nominate LeWoy Triplet, um, to be my planning commissioner. I believe he's gonna be great for the community, and I think he's just an excellent person to, uh, come inside, come alongside us. In this amazing adventure.
Okay, LeWoy. Okay. So we now have five nominees. We have LeWoy Triplet, we have, I believe, let's see, Cynthia Soss. Well, my last, ooh, I, I'm gonna mess that up. Lee Frichette, uh, Robert McGarvey, and Surrender Diver Polly. So can I entertain a motion to accept those?
Second.
Five. So wait, you seconded something. Nobody, nobody motioned yet.
Some move, some move.
Okay, we have a motion by Sander, a second by Budge. Can I get a roll call on the nomination of the first five planning commissioners? And I ver- I very much apologize, and hopefully these people will help me learn their names soon.
Triple down.
Councilmember Sander.
Hi.
Councilmember Pulipati.
Yeah.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yep.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Hi.
Yahoo.
Okay, um, if I'm sitting in the dais and we're going in order where people are sitting, Garrett, would you like to nominate? I guess we can start with you. We, we can do this two ways. We can nominate three and see if we get to two that have enough, or we can just start with two and see where we end up.
I think we should, I think we should start with two and see where we end up.
Anybody have a disagreement or a different way of doing it?
That's reasonable. We each named two.
Okay, Garrett, go ahead.
All right, I'm gonna start off with, um, Anil Ready as my first one, and then my next one out. Do, 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 do. Hold on one second. Sergio. So I would like Anil Ready and, uh, our, our good friend Sergio to be my two planning commissioners. At large.
Okay, um.
Do I, do I wanna tell them why they're amazing, or do we just go see what everyone else is thinking?
Well, let's, we've all had the opportunity to read everybody's resume.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, again, you can repeat. For those who may agree with that even, you can, so, uh, Siri, you're up next.
I second both of Garrett's choices. Anil Ready and Sergio Diaz.
Okay.
Oh, you got him with a laugh name.
Uh, David.
Um, well, I think we just picked Sergio. Um, he was on my shortlist.
Okay.
I think Anil is very, uh, qualified. I'm looking at people from the north. Um, I'm also thinking about some sort of connection to the old planning commission. So acknowledging that Anil is qualified, I think Ray Savorn would check those boxes of people from where a lot of our population is up north and someone who is connected to the old planning commission.
Could I point out that Sergio and Ray live in the same neighborhood?
Yeah, they do. It's a big neighborhood. I think we have two from, two from Mills Ranch as well. It's also a big neighborhood.
You're right. Okay, uh, Linda.
Okay, um, so, um, so my first pick was Anil. And my sec- second pick is, um, Kimberly Vester. Kimberly Vester is a young lady who grew up here. She lives in Walnutwood. She is a deputy sheriff. And she, um, has been a community participant from the time she was a Girl Scout.
She would've been, uh, likely one of my picks, but I think she withdrew.
Yeah, she's not still on the list. I'm looking at it right now.
I don't know. I don't know why.
I said the name, I'm like, yeah, and I'm looking at the, I'm looking at, with the map, she's not on it. You wanna pick somebody else? I mean, at this rate, I, I can tell you we've kinda picked.
I think if I'm counting, yeah, we, we picked.
Yeah, I, 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 but.
We'll see what Donald says.
Linda and I still have a right here, but to, to name names, but.
Right, okay, okay. I'm sorry. That's so simple. All right, so if I don't have Kim access, if I don't have access to Kim, then I would pick, uh, Tara Colvin-Bach.
Also a good pick.
Um, yeah, and I, I'm pretty much perfunctory here. Um, I would've probably gone with Angelica Wood. And, and Anil, I guess, but they're both in the same neighborhood. So looking at the, looking at what's on the board, I'd probably say Angelica and Sergio. Um, with what's in front of us. But if I'm looking at this, we have, um, so if I say Angelica, which didn't get anymore, and Sergio, Sergio has four. And Anil has three.
And I think on my list as well, if, in case, you know, if it would, if it would've come to a tie, Angelica was on my list as well.
Yeah, well, it's, it's not a tie. So at this rate, we've got, um, Anil with three, Sergio with four. If somebody would like to make a motion, and we can vote on that, but it looks like, I mean, we've all here between, and actually, I take that back. Anil, well, no, 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 I, I said Angelica. I know it's wrong. Um, so.
So I'd like to make a motion?
I think we have our, go ahead.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we pick up Anil Ready and Sergio Diaz as our other at-large, uh, planning commissioners.
Do you have a second?
I second.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Gatewood.
That went a lot fast.
Hi.
Councilmember Sander.
Hi.
Councilmember Pulipati.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Hi.
Mayor Terry, if I may, a quick, quick note on, on Anil Ready. Um, I know we've all picked him, uh, with a majority vote, but you know, um, he is somebody who's done the research, has fought his way to this table, right? So I, I'd like to really congratulate him on, on doing that background work to getting himself and, you know, to that table, and I hope he does.
We had to change our rules. It started off, you need to be an eligible voter.
And for those, yeah, for those residents who are, you know, north in the city and looking at another, another southerner, Anil might be an exception to that general rule because he did his master's thesis based on how to rejuvenate older communities and used our Folsom Boulevard study as the, uh, next for that. Yeah.
Kids are also in, in Folskordova.
Yes, they are.
Oh, I didn't know that. That's.
I believe they are, yeah.
It was also nicely qualified. We did not lack for good candidates.
Yeah, no, thank you. And you know, who knows, there are term limits to these positions, so we will be probably looking for new people sometime. Um, with that, we're gonna move on to item twelve point two.
Mayor Terry, Mayor Terry, can we do public comment?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Oops, oops, oops.
Oh, that's terrible.
Sorry about that. Yeah, go ahead, even though, go ahead.
We have, um, one public comment that the city clerk's office has received, um, via email. It is from Jeff Short. Uh, it's been distributed to the city council and it's, uh, been made available in the back of the room. I do not see any, I do not see any hands that are raised, and I do not have any public speaker cards.
Nor do I. Okay. With that, the items are agreed to, right? Or wait, do, we took a roll?
Yes.
No, we did not take, did we not take roll call? No, we didn't. We did?
We did.
Okay. I just didn't make notes. All right. Okay, uh, moving on to twelve point two, I wanna check in with council. We're, we're at nine forty-five. We have more than twenty pages and more than the applications.
We don't have to vote until ten o'clock.
Right. I'm wondering, do we really wanna start this item this late in the evening?
What was the, uh, I, I mistook the intent. I didn't think the intent was to go page by page through it.
That is normally what we do on the first night.
Oh, no.
That's why I'm asking, and that's why I've been pushing on these hearings and why they were taking so long.
I thought this was the first, first lurk, do you have any questions? And then next meeting, we go.
No, no, as, as my understanding was, tonight was going to be to give direction to staff on things.
Maybe we should hear from Stacy.
Stacy, Stacy Delaney is here, and she can, um, explain what we were hoping to accomplish tonight.
Right.
Good evening. So, um, the plan tonight was to first go over the proposed allocations for the internal departments. And then to go over the items that were tied to CRPD facilities since we need to segment those discussions and have one council member recuse himself from that conversation. And then we would begin the process of going over the ninety-three remaining applications. Um, the idea would be to go page by page, but only put a parking lot for those items that you want to further discuss at a future meeting.
That normally would, would take, in, in past years, it's taken more than two hours.
That's correct.
So, again, my question to colleagues, it's nine fifty on Monday. Are we wanting to go down this path? Do we wanna truncate it, or do we wanna punt it to a later date? Cause.
I propose moving it to a later date.
Yeah, if we're gonna go page by page, um, we can't do that tonight. It's ten till ten.
Keep in mind, we're not gonna have a meeting the first week in May.
We know.
And again, this is why we can't just front load everything into the middle of May and still get a budget out in time.
We might need to add a meeting.
I think we need to add a meeting, or we need to at least add that May meeting needs to start at like three o'clock or something.
Ouch.
Would the council be o- open to that option? Maybe starting this May sixteenth meeting at three P M?
You mean noon?
Or noon?
Would we give you that? But.
You know what I suppose, though? We have a time limit to everything. So that way, you know, some of the earlier ones end up, on time.
Yeah, well, legally, you can't really do that. We, we have to vote on stuff. I mean, I, I was doing my best to try to move folks along, but I, I'm, I'm guessing, Linda, you, you weren't, you didn't realize that this is what we were gonna discuss tonight. Um, but at this rate.
We have some really important items to talk about tonight.
Yeah, it wasn't my assumption either.
I think this is really important too. So, and I, I was hoping that we were gonna at least get to some of it, but I knew as we got later into the hour that we are not going to be able to adequately cover this subject. Um.
So I'm gonna second.
Well, so we have a suggestion to, 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 to continue this. I'm asking now, can we make ourselves available at say three o'clock on the sixteenth?
Let's check.
So we have a commitment at the night? So it's without a few extra hours in a meeting, we're about to bring one of those, those planning discussions that we just took two hours or an hour and a half on back onto the agenda, along with other things that need to happen.
I can do it on sixteen.
I think that's possible.
Maybe we might also poll the council for an additional special meeting during that week, or even even the week of the ninth, maybe adding something instead. So maybe on the ninth, I know I have it open. It's a Monday.
While, while I'd really like to say yes, I'm open to starting at three o'clock, I, I'm not a big fan of these really long meetings. So I prefer like two separate meetings where you can actually hold our attention and we can focus on the detail versus really long meetings.
Yeah, I, I don't mind long meetings that start earlier that don't end at ten or eleven o'clock at night personally. Um, but I mean, Siri, this is crunch time. We have a budget and all these things to pass. A, a lot of these things can come before us last year. Um, and also we were completely remote, so I think scheduling was a lot easier. Um, but th- this is just the time of year where we start to have some real struggles and, and I know I've, Cyrus, being chairman of me, we have a lot of development activities. There's just gonna be a lot more coming onto our agenda that just we haven't been used to in the last few years. There are more housing developments, there's more commercial developments, and if we take this long, to the, one of those, we're not gonna get a lot accomplished. So, do we wanna have Stacy at least check with our calendars for maybe, I could do May ninth or May tenth? Um, and then I know David's gonna be slammed with, uh, League of California City, or Cal Cities, um, is happening, so possibility to May ninth, May tenth, and a longer May sixteenth meeting. We could at least explore those as options to try to catch up because.
Yeah, those work.
Okay, cause losing.
I, I'd go either way.
In May makes it very difficult, but three of us aren't, aren't gonna be, we're not even gonna be in this state. Um, so, and there's, there's really no way to remote in from that event.
Right.
So if we could replace some of those, I think we could hopefully catch up. And, um, but at this rate, I just, I don't think we could give, we can't give the kind of justice and, and attention Stacy that you need to get, to get done with this subject.
I make it work, so you guys.
I hear you, Siri.
I'm sorry.
Good, good discussion is valuable. Um, but you've gotta, you've gotta be able to be on point to have that. So.
Yeah, and, and I would just point out too, I, I learned for work, I, I'm not gonna be able to be at least the beginning of the April twenty-sixth meeting. So I found out that today. So if we could start to look at those, um, and try to get something scheduled, do we, do we need to adopt additional meetings in the meeting? Cyrus, Adam? Or can we schedule those?
No, we can. We can plan those, the additional meeting on.
I hate Zoom. I hate it. I hate it with a passion.
Go ahead, Adam.
Adam, answer the question.
You go ahead, Cyrus.
Somebody answer me.
I don't go.
You can schedule a special.
You can schedule special meetings outside of the meeting.
Thank you. Okay. So we'll work on some additional meetings in May, uh, to try to get caught up. Um, okay.
Mayor Terry.
So with that.
Can we take public comment, please?
Yeah.
Uh, Anil, if you'd like to come forward.
Wait, hang on, hang on. I want to, hang on, hang on. So I want to remind everybody when it comes to the Community Cancer Fund, we are going to table this and continue it to a future agenda. So we're not going to take action or discuss it tonight. I would really appreciate any of the public commenters that wanted to comment about specific items on, uh, to to keep their comments until the time we're actually going to talk about this. But out of, but legally, yes, you can get up and make a comment right now. I would really appreciate you not doing that. But if somebody wants to now, go ahead. Do I still have any public commenters?
No, you do not.
Thank you very much. So we have a motion by Pulapati, a second by Gatewood to continue, um, this item until the middle of May. Um, or at an earlier, uh, meeting if we can get it squared away with our schedules. With that, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gatewood. Has stepped out. He has left. Yes. So absent. Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Councilmember Sander.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Hi. Four zero, Mr. Parliamentarian, is that an abstain or he wasn't around? That's, that's a four oh vote, right?
Yeah, four oh vote.
Aye, aye, woo, okay, aye. I'm going to count that as five oh. All right. It's only the room, Garrett. Um, all right, moving on to twelve point three, cancellation of our May second meeting. I think we just discussed this. Um, do I have a motion? Or actually, do we have any public comment? Let me not make that mistake again.
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment for item twelve point three.
Okay, um, do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a move by Gatewood, a second by Pulapati. I just want to take one quick second and thank you Stacy and Randy K and others that were ready to present tonight on this. I really do appreciate it. Um, and I'm sorry that we got this far and didn't get it done tonight, but we will get to this.
Thank you for showing up today. I really appreciate it. Sorry about that, guys.
With that, we'll, uh, uh, roll call please.
Councilmember Sander.
Hi.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yep.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Hi. Okay. It's ten o'clock. All right, a request for future agenda items.
I have a dissertation I'd like to read. No, I don't say that.
Oh, um, can we, can we close today in, in memory of the girl that, um, in, in Stockton High School? Um, who was stabbed.
Do you have a name? Do you have a name or could you get it to him?
I don't have a name.
Okay, if you want to find it later and get it to Stacy and I, and we can have it included into the minutes.
This is, this is just fresh up the news and it's really disturbing.
Okay. Yeah, uh, you can get a name. I haven't been watching the news the last two hours. Um, moving on to adjournment, we will adjourn tonight in memory of Art Smith, Dick James and Steve Hagan. And we will find the name in Syria who you want to do as well. Um, so with that, at nine fifty-nine, we will stand adjourned. Thank you, colleagues and community. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Stacy.